Welcome to the April 8, 2025, meeting of the Gloucester City Council. This public meeting of the city council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications and public hearings to be recognized to speak. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the city council and a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minute shall note the interruption. It is the finding of the city of Gloucester that no individuals shall be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental, uh, mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. Tonight, we have, um, in attendance, Ward Two Councillor Dylan Benson, Councillor-at-Large Valerie Gilman, Ward Four Councillor Frank Majota, we have Ward One Councillor Scott Memmard, we have Ward Three Councillor Marjorie Grace, we have Councillor-at-Large Jason Grow, we have Council Vice President and Ward Five Councillor Sean Nolan, and I am Tony Gross, the Gloucester City Council President. We also have, um, Grace Poyer, our City Clerk is here, and we have CFO Connor McCorkle online. And we will have a flag salute. Please join us. Aye. Let allegiance to the United.
Aye. The United States of America, into the Republic. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Councillor Worthley has just joined us. He's Councillor-at-Large. We will now have oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity every, at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, make their statement without debate, and the council will refer the matters to the office of the mayor. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. Okay, we have one raised hand online.
Hi. Yes, I'm here.
Name and address, um, for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Shelley Slaboter. I live at 54 Lexington Avenue, number 21. Um, I wanted to speak tonight on the rodenticide issue as I.
I'm sorry, we, um, that is on our agenda this evening?
Oh, it's still on the agenda. Okay.
It is. It is. We, we, we have to, um, it's, it's on the agenda and we will have to take care of it. Um, but please, um, you're welcome anytime to come and speak to us about this.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk at the agenda then. Thank you.
Um, the public hearing is probably not going to happen.
Oh.
Motion's going to be withdrawn. You know, just anybody else who is here for the rodenticide, that we will, the public hearing, we will probably, the motion shall be withdrawn. Turned out that procedurally, we couldn't move forward with it, and a policy has been written that mirrors what the ordinance had said. So now it is, now that language is in effect.
Mr. President, if it, you could suspend the rules, if it's going to be withdrawn and hasn't been withdrawn yet, perhaps the oral communications could continue for three minutes for people speaking on that issue if they're not going to.
I think it would be more effective if they continue the conversation later rather than tonight. Thank you.
So does that mean that I won't get to speak on the matter at all tonight?
Correct. I think I sent you an email.
Yeah. No, I did get it, but I didn't think that that would preclude me from oral communication.
Yes, I'm sorry. Something that's on the agenda, even though it's, it's going to be withdrawn this evening. Um, it's an unfortunate circumstance, but that's, those are our rules. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President, could we withdraw it and then open up oral communications on the issue? Take it out of order? And it's no longer on the agenda? It's your call.
No, no, um, let's, let's try not to make this as, we have a long night tonight. Let's not make this as confusing as possible. And I'm so, I'm sorry, ma'am, um, that you got caught into that, into that loop.
No, I'm grateful to be able to speak. So I, I don't, don't, that's all I.
Please, please join us on any other night when it's not on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Okay, that appears to be it for oral communications. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Confirmation of new appointments.
Councillor Nolan. Uh, first up in the Affordable Housing Trust, we have Stephen Volz, uh, termed to end 216, 2027. Stephen, how you doing tonight? If you just want to come up and tell us a little bit about yourself? And please speak into the mic. Don't get yelled at like I did.
Yes, my name is Stephen Volz, 24 Calder Street, Gloucester.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on the committee?
Sure, I'm, I'm a member of Housing for Gloucester. I've been one of the core members for some time, working on the Yes for Gloucester campaign to see if we can get more affordable housing through multifamily housing. Um, I was a lawyer for 20 years, practicing a lot of real estate law, including a lot of zoning litigation. So I understand the ins and outs of the zoning regime, and I'm interested in developing and helping encourage more affordable housing here in the city.
Excellent. Thank you, Stephen. Is there any councillor questions or comments?
No questions. I'm just delighted that you're stepping up to the Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, we've known each other for a number of years and you're going to be a great asset to that group. It's already a great group, but it's going to be greater.
Thank you. Councillor Gilman.
Thank you, councillor. Um, Steve, I'd just like to echo that, that sentiment, and I value the Affordable Housing Trust very much. And if people in the audience ever want to see a strategic plan, um, they've done a remarkable job with it. It's all on their website, and those are the types of things that we really benefit by when our boards and commissions are so proactive. So thank you, and I will be supporting you.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Worthley.
Thank you, Councillor Nolan. Mr. Volz, thank you for volunteering and for your advocacy. I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to use this moment to share one or two ideas you think are the most compelling and most impactful that you'd suggest that either the city council or the Affordable Housing Trust take on, I'd love to hear it.
It's a little premature. I haven't gone over the Affordable Housing Trust. I've seen the, I've read the five-year plan. Um, I will say what I'm interested in, I don't know if it's feasible. Um, two things in particular, I think there needs to be more public education and transparency and outreach from the Affordable Housing Trust and from the city in general about the importance of steps, the specific steps you need to take in particular, making more multifamily housing available. Um, and I'd also like to, the trust, if we can, I don't know if this is possible, like I say, I'm not on it yet, but we have a overhoused population, and I'm part of it here. We've got all these big buildings where people like me have aged and their children have moved, so we have lots of excess capacity. I'd love to see some program where for people who need it, we could supply links or resources for, for funding and for maybe architectural support to take those big buildings, allow them to let the people like me, not me soon, but the idea, stay in the house, keep your garden, keep your view, keep your neighbors, but all those rooms you're closing off and not heating in the winter, make those available as, as smaller units for the kinds of smaller units we need in the city. I don't know if that's feasible or not, but that's one of the things I'm hoping we can look at.
Thank you for sharing your ideas.
Any other councillor comments or questions? I'll say that I, I met you first, former councillor Holgrom, and we had a very good conversation behind our house.
We did.
In relaxing. I, I think that you're of the right state of mind for what our community needs. Um, and I think that you'll be a blessing for the Affordable Housing Trust. Your 20 years in legal is something that you're going to have to rely on a lot because everything we do comes with laws and restrictions, and you may be a great help to them to find what is actual and factual, and I'll be proud to support you tonight.
Great, thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Oh, read the motion, sorry. That would be helpful. On a motion by councillor Majota, seconded by councillor Grace, the ordinance administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council appoint Stephen Volz to the Affordable Housing Trust, termed to end 216, 2027, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Nolan, seconded by councillor Grow. Now any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, nine to zero. Thank you, Stephen.
Great, thank you.
You've been sworn in?
I have not.
All right, if you can meet with the clerk's office sometime during the week to be sworn in, that'd be great.
I'll do that.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next one for Zoning Board of Appeals, Alex Ruiz, termed end 215, 2028. Is going to be withdrawn, uh, per the mayor for the amount of time that he's lived in the city. Thank you, councillor Worthley. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made for withdrawal, made by councillor Nolan, seconded by councillor Grace. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, nine to zero. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The consent agenda.
All right, anyone who would like to pull any matter off of the consent agenda? We're all good with the consent agenda this week? Okay, um, I'll accept a motion to, uh, accept the consent agenda. Second.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by councillor Gilman, seconded by councillor Nolan. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, nine to zero. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The April 3 Budget and Finance Standing Committee report.
Councillor Memmard.
Thank you very much. We have, uh, seven items for your consideration tonight from Budget and Finance. The first is a memorandum from the harbor master requesting our acceptance and approval of, uh, payment of a prior year invoice using fiscal year 2025 funds in the amount of $2,776.06, and this is for a copier payment to Conica, and I so move.
Motion made by councillor Memmard, seconded by councillor Worthley. Discussion. Sorry, thought they moved and seconded it.
Oh, you want me to read the motion?
Yeah.
Now, this is, this is really just a housekeeping matter. We actually paid it. They refunded us and then came looking for payment again later. So it's one of those things that falls into cracks. On a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Gross, the Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the city council approve in accordance with Mass General Law 4464, a payment of prior year invoices for Conica Minolta Business Solutions for providing a copier machine supplies in fiscal year 2021, and this is for the purpose of paying invoice number, as noted, dated December 30th, 2020, in the amount of $2,776.06, and it's to be paid with the current year fiscal 2025 Waterways Enterprise Fund Ordinary Maintenance Budget Fund, and I so move.
Second. And motion made by councillor Memmard, seconded by councillor Worthley. Discussion. Councillor Worthley.
Just like to add that any late fees and interest that was owed because of their error have not been incurred and we're paying the original amount, um, because it was their error. And so good job for the harbor master's office in catching this and knowing that we did pay it, in fact, on time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, ayes have it, nine to zero.
Item number two from our Budget and Finance Committee is a memorandum from the police chief and a 2025 special budgetary transfer number 18 in the amount of $31,000 to fund the replacement of Gloucester Police Department Patrol rifle inventory. I will read the motion. On a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the city council approve special budgetary transfer 2025 SBT number 18 in the amount of $31,000 from Police Uniform Personal Services salaries, account number as noted, to Police Uniform Capital Outlay Public Safety Equipment, account number as noted, and this is for the purpose of replacing the Gloucester Police Department's Patrol Rifle Inventory, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by councillor Memmard, seconded by councillor Worthley. Discussion.
I would just say that the, the chief made a brief presentation explaining that, uh, it's important that our force be training with contemporary approved weaponry and that the stock that we had in-house was getting old and unreliable. So this is an important step forward in terms of reliability in the equipment they're training upon.
Early discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, nine to zero.
Item number three from Budget and Finance is a memorandum from the chief financial officer in a 2020, 25 SBT number 17 in the amount of $7,500, and this is to bring on a former employee as an applications consultant for the IT department. And I'll go ahead and read this motion, which is, uh, by myself, seconded by councillor Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the city council approve special budgetary transfer 2025 SBT 17 in the amount of $7,500 from Management Information Systems Personal Services salaries, account number as noted, to Management Information Systems Ordinary Maintenance Professional and Technical Services, account number as noted, and this is for the purpose of paying an applications consultant to upgrade, to support upgrades and trainings in the IT department, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by councillor Memmard, seconded by councillor Worthley. I'd also like to announce that CAO Jill Cahill is also on, on Zoom, and our, um, city legal Suzanne Egan is also on Zoom. If you have any questions about this, you can ask. They're, they're both, um, CAO Cahill is, is available. I already know.
I had a question.
Already announced him.
Yeah, no, I had a question for any of them, but, um, so like, what type, so to elaborate, what type of work are they going to be doing? Um, like, so folks understand, like, it's a consultant, but what beyond, they're going to be doing updates? Are they updating the website? Um, if that makes sense, Jill.
Sure. Um, through, through the chair. Uh, so this is actually, uh, projects that she needed to finish, uh, when she left for her new position in Andover. And so she brought up the short-term rental registry that is live now. Uh, people are already using it. Um, she's queued up beach stickers, which we expect to go live midweek next week, and then in person early in May. So, um, just a few of those tune-up things that we needed to get in place before we were able to hire, uh, somebody permanently for the position.
Yeah, I just, this, this was carried out, as Jill said, by someone who left, and this, um, the money is coming out of the salary line item. They were performing this duty then, and now we don't have anyone there who does this. Um, for our particular, I think it's OneGov, um, program that we use. So it's, it was, um, you know, the money was there. It was in that salary line item. So it's not like we're taking it from anywhere else to do this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, nine to zero.
Item number four from Budget and Finance is a memorandum from the chief financial officer and a 2025 SA number seven in the amount of $36,824.86 for repairs at the I-4C2 parcel to improve safety for residents, tenants, tourists, and others who frequently use this portion of the Harbor Walk. And I can go ahead and read the motion if you'd like, please. On a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation, number 2025 SA seven, in the amount of $36,836,824.86 from the Gloucester Redevelopment Authority Agency Fund Undesignated Fund Balance, account number as noted, to the Waterways Enterprise Capital Projects Fund I-4C2 Repairs Purchase of Services, account number as noted, and this is for the purpose of repairs at the I-4C2 to improve safety for residents, tenants, and tourists who frequently use this portion of the Harbor Walk, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by councillor Memmard, seconded by councillor Worthley. Discussion. Questions?
Yeah, and, and councillor president, maybe you can also answer this for me as well. Is this a continuation of what we're, what we were already, they were already doing at the Harbor Walk at the I-4C2 lot, the repairs there, that obviously they were moving, folks had been moving their traps? Um, is that what's hap, is that this is a continuation of that, or?
This is funding that was in, that I-4C2 was under the, um, authority of the Gloucester Redevelopment Authority. They, um, relinquished that authority and they've been, um, they're no longer in existence, and five, if, if after five years, these funds were not, that if the Gloucester Redevelopment Authority had not been reestablished, then these funds would become, would become available for the purpose that they were originally intended. And yes, that's probably what these funds, it's not a continuation, but this is just an additional funding source for the repairs of that deck.
Okay, that makes sense. And then my other question is, when will this, so folks understand, is when will this repair be completed?
I don't think that there has been a schedule set for that. CAO Cahill?
Sure. Um, just to clarify, the movement of the funds is going from the former Gloucester Redevelopment Authority to the Waterways Enterprise Fund. There's a stabilization fund related to I-4C2 or 65 Rogers Street Commercial Marina. Um, so there is not a schedule planned, and it's not necessarily the deck. It's going into the stabilization fund for repairs and maintenance to that whole commercial marina area. So the project has many elements. I don't know if you guys remember, but, uh, we had to sustain some major damage over there during one of the most recent storms. I want to say it was 2023 or 2024. Um, so we have a report, uh, of a, a kind of a list of maintenance that needs to be done over there. Uh, so this is just one, we, we, this is just one step of moving the funds. We'll be applying for grant funds as well, and the waterways board, uh, will be considering using some of the retained earnings. So it's a larger project than just, than just this $34,000, but, um, the opportunity to transfer it, uh, became available. So we thought we'd, we'd do that at this time.
That makes sense, and I'll, I'll be supporting it. But, but just so, so will this work be happening in the near future? Like, is it going to be, it's not going to be happening during the height of summer, but just to get a gist of, okay.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't do it during the height of summer, and again, we'll follow the lead. Uh, the waterways board will take the lead on this. So, um, follow their agendas and their meetings. They've been talking about it and their facilities and, um, subcommittees. So follow their agendas for updates on, on when the work will be done, but we'll prepare to move boats and all of that kind of stuff. There'll be plenty of warning for the, for the tenants of that marina.
No, thank you very much, Jill, and, and that's good to know, folks that are interested to be paying attention to those agendas. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Roll call.
Aye. Roll call.
Councillor Gross.
Aye.
Councillor Grow.
Aye.
Councillor Majota.
Aye.
Councillor Memmard.
Aye.
Councillor Nolan.
Aye.
Councillor Worthley.
Yes.
Councillor Benson.
Aye.
Councillor Gilman.
Aye.
Councillor Grace.
Aye.
Vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Moving along, item number five from Budget and Finance Committee is a memorandum from the chief financial officer and a 2025 SA number eight in the amount of $10,000, and this is to fund Mass Audubon's Coastal Waterbird Program that monitors the presence of and minimizes disturbance to our federally protected coastal seabirds. And a 2025 SA number nine, this is a separate item in the amount of $37,000 to fund the 20, April 24th, 2025 special election. So I'll do the, I'll do the motion on the first item and we can have discussion. On a motion by myself, seconded by councillor Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the city council approve supplemental appropriation, 2025 SA number eight, in the amount of $10,000 from the General Stabilization Fund Undesignated Fund Balance, account number as noted, to the General Fund DPW Services, Public Services, Ordinary Maintenance Purchase of Services, account number as noted, and this is for the purpose of funding the Mass Audubon's Coastal Waterbird, Coastal Waterbird Program that monitors the presence of and minimizes the disturbance to federally protected coastal birds, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by councillor Memmard, seconded by councillor Worthley. Discussion. Councillor Gilman.
With your permission, um, councillor president, I'd like to ask Jill Cahill if she could explain those two documents that she sent to me today, which I shared with councillors, um, because there was some helpful information based on some constituent questions that I had. Um, the two documents that you shared, um, Jill Cahill, for the, for the president.
Thank you. Uh, uh, through the chair. So, um, responding to some constituent questions, I shared with councillor Gilman both the scope of services for 2025. Um, the short version, as councillor Memmard discusses, the monitoring and, um, the protection of coastal waterbirds, not just plovers. There's other coastal waterbirds that are protected on Good Harbor Beach. So the scope of services has been provided to you for what will be covered in 2025. I also sent, what was the invoice for 2024? It's, was already in your packet for BNF, uh, just, just to show reflection. So we've been working and advocating with the Coastal Waterbird Program to explain that this is an unfunded mandate by the state for, that it doesn't come under our budget, but we understand we need to do. So they, Audubon has been good at working with us. You'll see later in your agenda. We, there was a clerical error and we did not get the PO in last year. So last year, we were able to, to come to an agreement for $5,000 for their services. The invoice that was provided in your packet, and then again today, reflects that the actual work that they did was about $16,000. And so this year, um, again, I explained to them the tight budget situation that we're in, and, um, that it's difficult to add this to the budget each year. Uh, we were able to negotiate for a, a lower price, um, higher than 5,000. I think we decided on 7,500 for the year, but we're transferring 10,000 in case, uh, we're working towards a approval of our beach management plan, so we can again rake Good Harbor Beach. Uh, but in order to, uh, get approval to rake the beach, because we, it, it does, um, we have a significant, our biggest complaint about the beaches, Good Harbor in particular right now, is litter, and so the rake is what prevents that. Um, in order to rake the beach, you also have to pay one of the Audubon, um, spotters, certified spotters to walk in front of the rake. So we want to have a buffer in there, so if we are able to rake the beach, we'll be able to pay for a spotter to do so. Um, handpicking the beach is not feasible. Um, we don't have the staff to do it. Uh, and litter is, is every bit of a threat to plovers as, um, some of our animal attracts the animals that are, are the threat to the plovers. So, uh, we're building it into the budget, uh, for DPW going forward for beach management. Uh, but those documents explain the variances in the, in the, um, in the payments last year and this year, as well as the, uh, scope of work that they're responsible for.
I have one follow-up, please.
And this is just for Good Harbor Beach, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Gross?
Yes.
Counselor Grow?
Yes.
Counselor Majota?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Aye.
Counselor Nolan?
Aye.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes.
Counselor Benson?
Aye.
Counselor Gilman?
Aye.
Counselor Grace? Motion passed, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Sal?
Okay.
The second part of the motion that I introduced is a, relates to the upcoming special election on April 24th, and on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the City Council approve a supplemental appropriation, 2025 SA number nine, in the amount of $37,000 from our General Stabilization Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance, account number is noted, to the General Fund Registration, Ordinary Maintenance, Purchase of Services, account number as noted. And this is for the purpose of funding the April 24th, 2025 special election, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Gilman.
I'm recusing myself, I believe Counsel Grace will be as well. That's why I didn't second.
Very good. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, sorry.
Counselor Gross?
Aye.
Counselor Grow?
Aye.
Counselor Majota?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Aye.
Counselor Nolan?
Aye.
Counselor Benson?
Aye.
Counselor Gilman?
Aye.
The vote is seven in favor, zero opposed, two recused. The motion passes.
Item number six on our agenda is a follow-up to the matter we were discussing previously regarding Mass Audubon, and it relates to the Chief Financial Officer's request for approval to pay a prior year invoice using fiscal year 2025 funds. This is in the amount of $5,000 for fiscal year 2024, Mass Audubon's 2025 summer season work, as previously described, and on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the City Council approve, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 4464, 4464, payment of a prior year invoice for Mass Audubon Coastal Waterbird Program, provided coastal waterbird monitoring and management services at Good Harbor Beach in fiscal year 2024. And this is for the purpose of paying an invoice dated October 25th, 2024, in the amount of $5,000 to be paid with the current year fiscal year 2025 mayor's budget, mayor's office budgeted funds. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And finally, no action required, but for your information, the CFO has requested an additional $750,000 to be placed in the DPW snow and ice budget, bringing our fiscal year commitment to $1,750,000. And that was snow you saw last night and this morning. So, user, we're not done yet. And that's for your information.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Nolan?
You use your microphone.
Benson, amend GCO, Chapter 20 Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22270, parking prohibited at all times, and Section 22291, towaway zones by deleting Pleasant Street on a westerly side, beginning at the point of 130 feet from its intersection with Warren Street, in a northerly direction for a distance of 25 feet, and Section 22279, 30-minute parking by adding Pleasant Street on a westerly side, beginning at the point of 130, from its intersection at Warren Street, in the northerly direction of a distance of 25 feet. And a little side information, this is for a 30-minute parking spot outside of the insurance company over on Prospect Street. To?
Pleasant Street.
Pleasant Street, sorry. CC 202516, Grace, amend GCO, Chapter 22 Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22270, parking prohibited at all times at 22-291, towaway zones by adding prohibited, parking prohibited on Bertoni Road, easterly side from intersection New York Road to intersection with Boppa Street, from Number 1 to April 1st. And this is a weird one, because it's for wintertime things, but it's for plowing issues. And that will be something coming up. Thank you.
Very good. Planning a development, and you don't have anything, correct? You got nothing? Okay. We have public hearing 2025-007, RZ 2025-001, to amend GZO three-dimensional regulations by adding a new section, 3.1.9, change of use without exterior changes. This public hearing was opened on March 25th and is being continued until May 13th, 2025. Next, we have public hearing 2025-008, RZ 2025-002, amend GZO Gloucester zoning ordinance by adding new section, 5-21, demolition delay. This public hearing was opened on March 25th and is being continued to May 27th, 2025. Next, we have a public hearing 2025-011, SCP 2025-002, Washington Street, number 964, map number 139, lot number 24, Gloucester Code of Ordinance, Section 2.3.1, residential uses, subsection 7, conversion to a new multifamily or apartment dwelling, four to six dwelling units. Section 3.2.2, dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs. Footnote, for a minimum lot open, lot area open space per dwelling unit, and 3.1.6B, building heights in excess of 35 feet for the conversion of, to a four-family dwelling unit in the R-20 district. And I will open the public hearing. And now we will have the proponents speaking in favor.
Good evening, Salvatore Frontero, 46 Middle Street for the applicant. And I have with me today Joe Barrett, who's the site manager, and also the principal of HB Development Corp, the applicant, and that is David Barrett. We here seeking special council permits to convert to four-family use, lesser required lot area per dwelling unit, lesser open space per dwelling unit, and for heights above 35 feet, so four special permits. This property is located in the sort of Bayview-Lanesville section of Gloucester, depending how you look at it, just past the Marine Station on the westerly side of the road. It formerly housed a church, that was a church for many, many years, for decades, and more recently, it's been used as a single or two-family home. And it's also fallen into disrepair now, and is vacant. The petition to desire is again to, to convert this for the purposes of keeping, is keeping the church. He's looked at, they've looked at their, you know, their acquisition cost and, and the construction cost after they opened place up, ended up being a little bit more than they thought. So to make this economically viable, we're seeking a four-family use. And most of the neighbors we spoke to were in favor of keeping the church. Yeah, so, and what we plan to do is, in the front yard, we got a variance from the zoning board, we're gonna add two parking spaces with a hammerhead. And then on the backyard, there's an ample parking space, we're gonna have six more spaces there. So that is two more spaces than required in the R-20 zone, this is in the R-20 zone. They require six. Prior to coming here, we went to the zoning board to obtain all relief necessary there. I believe we had nine variances, but most of them were due to sort of the issue we're gonna talk, that you continued, and that is that we changed use, proposing to change use from a single and two to a four, going into a new dimensional category, therefore you lose all your, all your legally non-conforming rights. So most of them were technical in nature, the only changes to the building were reatt, rebuilding rear decks there that were there before and are gone. And then, so that results in a lateral extension on the, on the right side yard. And the only other variance of meaning was the variance to allow parking in the front yard setback area. As, as the, as the council knows, single and two families are exempt from that, but three families must, not provide parking in the front yard setback area without a variance. Now, as part of that process, we tried to work with the neighbors as much as possible. The most affected neighbor, Tony Malinsky, Tony Malinsky, we came to an agreement with her, she's immediately across Sanderson Court. And what we decided was that we're gonna install some stonework, install a fence, and we ended up incorporating that into the zoning board decision. Another issue raised by the neighbors was the fact that there's the two parking spaces with the hammerhead, and people were rightfully concerned that the hammerhead may be used for parking. So we also agreed to put in the zoning board decision a condition that there'd be a no parking sign there, and in the event that this is converted to condominiums, that would be carried forward as a restriction in the condominium documents. And at the hearing, two neighbors spoke in favor and two in opposition, but everybody that spoke said, we want to keep the church. So that was a common theme to the neighborhood. So the first permit we're requesting is a special permit to convert to four-family use. And that's allowed in the section 2.3.4, pursuant to 1.8.3, upon a written determination that the proposed use will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, and it will not adversely affect the neighborhood, the zoning district of the city, to such an extent as to outweigh the beneficial effects of such use. And as the council knows, there are, there are seven factors that we look at when we're, when we're doing that. I'm not gonna name them all individually, I'm just gonna go over them one at a time. The first is the social, economic, and community needs that will be served by the, by the use. There are very few apartments in this area, and I'll talk about that more later. It is dominated by single-family homes. It gives renters very little choice as to, as to moving there. If you have a couple that wants to stay in Lanesville and Downsides and doesn't want the burden of having to deal with a yard and everything, there's almost no options at all, as I'll talk about later. So it'll meet that need. And it'll also help lessen the disparity, I think, between the more affluent people who could afford to live there, and something a little bit more reasonable. So I'm surprised, when I looked into this, I was surprised at the dearth of three family, four families, anything there, it's, there's almost nothing in that area. So I think that'll have, that'll be, meet a social need. As far as the second element, that's traffic flow and safety. Again, we're providing eight parking spaces, six are required by law, so requiring two more. We also have the hammerhead, so that nobody will be backing out onto Washington Street, which is obviously a busy thoroughfare. The other six spaces are out back, and they'll be accessed via Henderson Court. Henderson Court is not real wide, but we're only going 160 feet into Sanderson Court before we reach the parking area. So it'll only be the beginning of that road that we'll see that, and I think having two more spaces will also lessen any burden of on-street parking. So again, we're providing two more spaces. And as far as increased traffic, Washington Street being such a busy thoroughfare, I don't think that, that it would even feel sort of four units more affecting the traffic on that road in general. So we believe it is not detrimental to traffic flow and safety. Third, as to adequacy of public utilities, the site will be served by municipal water and all other services will be private. As to public services, there's ample room in the front yard area to accommodate emergency vehicles, so there'll be no detrimental effect on the public services as well. Fourth, we have neighborhood character, social structure. I'm sure most of you know this church. It is rather iconic when you come into Lanesville, you can't miss it. Colloquially, it's known as the Blue Church, I think, that's what most people I know call it. And, you know, I think that the need to preserve the church is a common theme among everybody. It's a common theme among the neighbors. And it's clear that that building is sort of part of the fabric of the neighborhood. I mean, it's, it's well-known there, and it's been there for a long time. Also, if this, if this relief is allowed, the, it'll still look like a church. There're gonna be some exterior changes, mainly dealing with, you know, the decks out back. And other than that, it's putting in some window wells, some doorways and windows, and some roofs over doorways. But as you can see from the plan submitted, it will still look like a church, so it'll maintain its character as a church in the process. Regarding fifth qualities of the natural environment, this is not in any wetless buffer, buffer areas. And disturbance of the lot would be minimal with this relief, because we wouldn't be, you know, digging a heck of a lot here. If you had to tear it down, there's a lot of excavation, a lot more earth disturbance to that. There's no need to accommodate a septic system, because it's on public sewer, and we're unaware of any other detrimental effects to the environment. The sixth element is fiscal, fiscal impact. There'll be construction jobs created by this, the taxable value of the property will go way up, and there is a possibility the city may impose sewer privilege fees as a result of additional units. So the fiscal impact will be positive. Lastly, number seven is vulnerability to flooding and flood damage, taking into consideration projections for sea level rise. This is well beyond any, any flood zone. This is at an elevation of 50 to 52 feet on average, and the land slopes down towards the ocean. So even if things change, flood zones change, there's no way this is ever gonna be in a flood zone, so that's a non-issue here. So I think that the, what I explained makes clear that the beneficial element of the project would outweigh the negative impacts. The negative impacts will be negligible, and the four-family use be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, and will not adversely affect the neighborhood, the zoning district of the city to such an extent as to outweigh the beneficial effects of the four-family use. So for those reasons, I asked of that special permit issue. We're also, two more forms of relief we're asking for here is a special permit, a lesser lot area per dwelling unit, and lesser open space per dwelling unit. And the standard of review there is, the City Council is authorized to allow less than required lot area per dwelling unit and open space per dwelling unit by special permit, only upon a finding that such lesser lot area or open space is in keeping with neighborhood character and structural density. Now, that standard was further clarified in the Bevallacore versus City of Gloucester case. In that case, the judge reasoned that because single and two families have a lot area requirement, and multifamilies do not, they have a, a open space per dwelling unit, a lot area per dwelling unit, that in making this analysis, it's not really appropriate to compare it to single and two families. Three families happen to have both a lot area per dwelling unit requirement and a lot coverage requirement. So the court thought these were rather exclusive, and you should be looking only at three families and more when making this analysis to make a true comparison. And, excuse me, so it's judged on that standard. Also, what we did is we did a analysis of all the multifamilies in the area. We looked at hundreds of properties, and believe it or not, there are seven or eight only in that entire area. There are three families on Washington Street, there were, there were four of those, excuse me, five of those. And there is a four-family on Locust, Mount Locust Place, and a five-family on Quarry Street. So the lot area per dwelling unit is easy to calculate. Obviously, we take the lot area, we divide it by the number of, of dwelling units. The analysis is not so easy when it comes to, when it comes to open space. Open space requires that, you know, you enter the property, you take measurements, so it's not as easy, it's more sort of intrusive on property owners to do that. So what we figured out here is that the open space per dwelling unit is about 35% of the lot area per dwelling unit for this site. So what I decided to do, I thought the best thing to do was in the analysis, is, is whenever we're looking at a lot area per dwelling on the other structures, another properties, we take 35% of that for open space per dwelling unit. So if you look at that, if you include all of the properties I had of that Exhibit A, you will see that the average lot area per dwelling unit is 35, 3,579 feet. And if you only include Washington Street, the average lot area per dwelling unit is 2,039 square feet. Here, we are proposing 2,978 square feet, so it's, it's sort of in between the two, but it's better than the three families that exist. And that would translate to, the open space per dwelling unit here is 1,035 feet. And again, under that same analysis, it's comparable to the three families. So we're asking for a special permit deviation on the lot area per dwelling unit of 7,022 feet, and an open space per dwelling unit is 6,464. In this area, 10,000 square feet is required for lot area per dwelling unit, and 7,500 square feet for open space. So even though they're, you know, it's, it's a bit of a deviation, it is in, in character with the neighborhood, it is in keeping with the neighborhood there in terms of three families, and also in terms of multifamilies beyond that. So for that reason, we asked of those special permits issued. And lastly, we are looking for a special permit to exceed 35 feet in height, and in accordance with Section 3.1.6B, the council's authorized to allow these height exceptions over 35 feet by special permit, upon a written over 35 feet by special permit, upon a written determination by the council that such increase in allowable height is consistent with neighborhood character, and will not be substantially or detrimental to the neighborhood because of obstruction of views, overshadowing other properties, and impairment of adverse, excuse me, impairment of utilities or other adverse impacts. So, the main things are obstruction of views, overshadowing, and, and, excuse me, obstruction of views, overshadowing, and impairment of utilities. And here, it's, it's a bit of an illusory request, because the building is not changing, but again, we're losing all of our legally nonconforming rights. So, this is sort of the same thing we did with the ZBA when it came to technically asking for relief for those seven variances, strictly due to a change in use. So, the status quo's gonna remain the same. It's not gonna obstruct views any more than it already does, it's not gonna overshadow any more than it, it already does, and it's not gonna impair utilities. So, for that reason, I would ask that that relief be allowed. 30 feet is allowed in this area, and the exist, and existing is 69.7, again largely due to the, the fact that we have a steeple there. And so, we're asking for a deviation there of 39.7 feet. And if we, I think if we take everything that I've talked about as a whole, I think this will have a beneficial effect on the city and the neighborhood. Again, I think it's important to point out, there's very few options for people to live in this area if they want an apartment, and there are various reasons why people want an apartment, more affordable, downsizing. If a couple lives in Lanesville right now, and they say, "Oh, I don't want to deal with my house anymore, I want to have a, you know, apartment, not have to deal with the grounds," they're extremely limited. So, this would help add to that, and I think it would be beneficial to the area as a whole and to the city, and for that reason, I ask that the relief be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor? One person online?
Sorry. Sorry about that, am I unmuted?
Can you, David, can you wait a minute while the person who stepped to the microphone can speak first?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Name an address and speak into the microphone, please.
My name is Hans Punt, and I live across the street from the Blue Church, 969 Washington
The microphone, otherwise the recording doesn't pick it up.
Yep, sorry about that. I'm in favor of this project because...
Closer to the, there you go.
Hello, hello?
Yeah.
I'm in favor of this project because there's enthusiasm to keep this iconic church the way it is, and not to tear it down and put up some other structure. It's been there for a long time, it's part of the, the neighborhood, it's also part, I was just over in Ipswich, pointing out our house from Ipswich, pointing out the church. So, from the ocean, it's iconic, too. It's like a lighthouse. So, I hope you grant them what they're looking for. It's nice to have the energy in this building, and to save this as much as we can. Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Richard Stoloff, 968 Washington Street. I am here to hope that this goes through. The church is a piece of the neighborhood, and all it's gonna do is make it look better. Looks kind of rundown now, because it's been either unoccupied or underoccupied. We know that the builder will straighten the church out, clean it up, and take what could have been an eyesore, and keep it as, as the building looks on Washington Street. It really is a, a spot on Washington Street that people refer to all the time. When people come to visit me, they said, "Do you know the Blue Steeple Church? With the next house you see." So, let's keep it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the auditorium would like to speak in favor? No, we're gonna go to online. Hey, David, now, now you're up. You're muted.
I, I just want to reinforce what has been said...
Name and address for the, name and address for the record.
Sorry, sorry, David Arnold, 6 Sanderson Court. I don't think there's any confusion that if you add four domiciles to this neighborhood, it's, it's going to have an impact. Nevertheless, this church shows up on the horizon of every historic photograph that I find in Bayview, and I think we are lucky to have somebody who can make the numbers work, and I speak in favor of it.
Anyone who'd like to, anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Okay, we have one online. Steve's?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, yes, so Lauren Boudoir-Steves, 4 Sanderson Court, lived there for 20-plus years, as is most of the neighbors on Sanderson Court, have lived there in excess of 20 years. And I'm opposed to the four-unit development, because it's predominantly a single-family neighborhood, as pointed out by Attorney Ferrante, there's only seven or eight multifamily units in all of that area. In a single-family neighborhood, particularly on Sanderson Court, which is a very narrow dirt lane, I think it could significantly alter the character and livability of the immediate area. As you know, single-family neighborhoods typically prioritize open space, front yards, green space area. This is currently the case in the area of Washington Street and Sanderson Court, even the prior owners of the property had the front lawn green space, and also had a flower and vegetable garden growing along the side of the property. The property did contribute to the green space and aesthetic appeal of the neighborhood, and supported the environmental quality and the sense of community, there was even a police space in the front lawn for the owner's young children. I think introducing a four-unit developments, including that front lawn parking plan, will not only compromise the visual appeal of the neighborhood, but it will reduce the overall green space. I also believe it will potentially affect the property values of the single-family homes that are immediately adjacent to the property. I do appreciate the fact that the developer wants to come in and, and restore the church, but I think a three-unit development is more appropriate with only the rear parking to be reasonable. This would still allow for some increased housing availability while maintaining the character of the neighborhood. Also, again, not approving the front lawn parking plan would preserve the green space out front and ensure the property remains consistent with all the other properties that are immediately adjacent and in the overriding area. I know the developer tonight through Attorney Ferrantino, you know, mentioned that the, the only land that's affordable to the developer, that's viable, is a four-unit development. I would disagree, I think there's profitability in potentially a three-unit development, given the home values in the area, that would still maintain affordable in the relative term. Nothing in our neighborhood is gonna be actually affordable, might be less than some of the multimillion-dollar homes, but it's still gonna be a pretty expensive place to live when the development is complete. So, I think a three-unit development with no front lawn packing, parking is more appropriate. I also want to make the point that it's not the neighborhood or the property of Butters that should be asked to bear the burden and the potential risk to their own property values to support the developers' profit margin goals. I also just wanted to, just counter a few of the things that Attorney Ferrante mentioned. Yes, the property is vacant, because it was sold. Yes, it was in somewhat of disrepair, but the young couple that lived there for 11 years was working on restoring the property, and did one entire side of the church in that time that they were there, but, you know, continuing to improve that property was gonna be too much for them and their, their young family to absorb, to absorb, sorry. And I would counter also that the Malinskys, although they're the direct of Butters, they're not the only ones, so they're gonna be impacted by this development. The rear decks in the back of the property are gonna overshadow my home that's on the other side of Sanderson Court. And as I said, I don't believe these units are going to be very affordable, although they will be an alternative in the neighborhood, because there is a lack of housing, I totally appreciate that. Also, Attorney Ferrante said it's only gonna affect and impact the first 150 feet of Sanderson Court, Sanderson Court is only about 180 feet long. I mean, and everyone's gonna be impacted by this four-unit development. I also think that their rights, it's not gonna impact the overall traffic on Sanderson Court, but it will double the vehicular traffic, I mean, on, on Washington Street, but will double the vehicular traffic on Sanderson Court. And that's what I have to say, so thank you for the time, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. For the record, it's Attorney Frontero.
Oh, Attorney Frontero, I'm sorry.
Okay, just need to put that on the record. Anyone else who wish to speak in opposition, you'll have three minutes. Okay, we see none, nobody in the room? Do we have any communications, Madam Clerk?
There was only one communication that was received too late to be part of the record, but it was forwarded to the council yesterday.
Okay, thank you. We have, now we're, now is our period for questions from the counselors to the applicant Counselor Gilman?
Thank you, Attorney Frontero, appreciate it. I would like you to just review with the, if you would, with the council a little bit more on the conditions for the steeple, because that's something that was recently sent to all of us to take a look at, and that was a condition for the permit, so if you could explain that.
Yeah, I think the, the P D of Conserve was raised about, you know, you have that steeple there, and your height is 69.7 feet, what's to stop somebody, first of all, from, you know, widening that, you're still at 69.7 feet, but you have a lot more bulk. So, I think we're willing, obviously, not to change the steeple, the steeple dimensions are eight feet, 10 inches wide, six feet, eight inches deep, and it is 21 feet, four inches in height when measured from the peak of the roof to the peak of the, of the steeple. We have no intention of changing anything over there. If we did change anything over there, we'd have to come back for further relief anyway, and we're happy to, you know, accept anything in terms of a condition that the steeple bulk height not change.
One more question, with your permission?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Gilman.
When we were there, and I think five or six of us were there for the site visit, which was great, and it was a freezing cold day, but it's, it's an incredible location. But my question is, could you just elaborate a little bit on the hammerhead in the front, because that did create a long conversation of understanding it in regards to the safety issues?
Sure.
We visualized it, but if you could explain that a little bit more, the rest of the council, I would appreciate it.
Well, first off, we thought it was important to provide that, because we thought it would be, rather than keeping the front yard the way it was, we thought it better to provide two parking spaces. We also knew there'd be a concern about backing onto Washington Street. So, as it's, as it's proposed, you would pull in, right in front of the house perpendicular, and each of those cars would have a hammerhead to the, to the right to back out and do a pullout forward on Washington Street. And as stated earlier, the ZBA relief is conditioned upon both a sign being maintained there, and also that that restriction be carried forward into any condominium documents and things like that.
Thank you, that's all my questions.
Counselor Grow?
I just want to, if you could clarify, that the two spaces in the front yard are extra spaces effectively from what you are required to have under the zoning. If you decide at some point that you don't need those, you're not obligated to then put in this hammerhead parking area, you could just leave it as it is, and just sit over. The other thing is, the intention, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, is that, yeah, expectation is that there will be two cars per unit, as is typical with most arrangements, that you, you're, you're trying to avoid parking on Sanderson Court, or anywhere in the, in the adjacent area, that otherwise you'd be impacting the, the local street parking, right?
That, that's exactly right, I mean, you know, the ordinance saying one and a half spaces is probably, was done before people had two cars, I mean, nowadays, it's, when we, we grew up, it was one car, and, you know, one parent worked, nowadays, it's two cars. So, we thought it appropriate in that situation to avoid any issues of parking where people shouldn't park and things like that, so we thought it was important to add those two extra spaces for that very reason.
I have a quick follow-up. During the site visit and subsequent to that, we've just talked about the possibility of having a non-asphalt, maybe a gravel or pea gravel, or, or some sort of previous pavement in there, is there still some possible thought to that, so that it's not necessarily just an asphalt parking lot?
Yeah, I mean, we have an open mind toward that, as we discussed at the, at the meeting. I don't know if Joe, if you want to add anything to that, the site manager's here, but to the extent we can do that, we'll do that.
Counselor Grace?
Thank you, just, first of all, I was on the site visit, and I think it's a great use of the space that you're doing there, and maintaining something that is such an iconic landmark in that community, and I'm sure that they are grateful that, you know, that will be remaining. And I just wanted to follow up kind of on something that Counselor Grow said about the parking, when we were there, it was, you know, cold, snowy, and icy, so it was difficult to visualize where additional parking would be, say, if somebody had company, or if somebody needed to have, you know, if you have three bedrooms in a couple of the units, it's conceivable that, you know, you could have multiple cars for one. So, just, if you could just give me an idea of where kind of overflow parking would go, you know, say someone had a barbecue or something?
Well, if there, if somebody has a guest, first of all, they could walk in the two spaces that would be associated with that unit, because each unit's gonna have, you know, to the extent possible, two contiguous units, so you could park a car there conceivably. You may have to move it if, you know, if somebody needs to get out, obviously, but you could conceivably park a car there. There's no intention to park on Sanderson Court at all. You could also put an extra car in the, you know, blocking in the, the front spaces as well. So, to the extent that a guest comes for a particular unit, they could accommodate that parking to the extent possible. And that's, but that's an issue with the whole entire neighborhood, obviously.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's just a curiosity question, and just, you know, in keeping, it is helpful with the neighbors if they, you know, I, I live in a, in a pretty dense area, and there's just always cars parked everywhere, so I can certainly understand why people would be concerned about that, and it certainly doesn't break any regulations. But the little area that's in back where I parked when I was there is kind of an open area surrounded by trees, is that something that would be available for any type of overflow parking?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, it could be, and when we went there, if you recall, it was, it was snow-covered ground, and we pointed out where the, where the stone wall was, but that's not, that's gonna be expanded out. So, yeah, that's a possibility, I mean, we're pretty tight on where we are in that lot, you know, I mean, in the back, we tried to, you know, we wanted to make the parking zoning compliant, you know, nine-by-18 spaces, that type of thing. So, as a result of that, we, you know, we're creative in getting six spaces back there, and I think it'll work. But the area that you saw when you were there, it's far larger than that, so that may be a little bit deceiving.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, it was covered with snow and ice, and so it was difficult to kind of visualize what was available there, and, and although you're 100% within what the, the regulations call for, I just think in, in, you know, if the neighborhood can kind of have an idea of what is the plan, or what, you know, where is an overflow spot, just, you know, just in the event, I just think it's kind of just good neighborly.
Yeah, and also, I should point out that Sanderson Court is a lot wider on paper than it is on the ground, so that could eventually be widened if there's an issue, too.
Thank you.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes, thank you. Attorney Frontero, you've done an excellent job, as always. I always try to find questions that you haven't thought of, or the council hasn't, and I'm struggling, so I'm just going to ask a couple. You proposed that there be no park, I'm sorry, the ZBA made a condition that there be no parking sign on the property for that hammerhead spot would be, are you suggesting that it's a city-enforced parking sign, or is it owner-occupied, like...
It'd have to be, the, the property owner would enforce it.
So, it'd really be just encouragement, there's no ticketing or any enforcement?
No, but if it's, if we do condoize it, you know, anybody who did that would be subject to a fine, as you know, with condominiums, that's how you enforce it, with fines levied upon unit owners that don't follow the rules.
I respect that the neighbor that opposed this discussed that it would be increasing potential traffic and parking. I just want to know, I believe this, this was a church in the 1920s where there was Sunday service, and I think hundreds of people, and there was, I think it was a daycare at some point.
It was a daycare for a while, yeah.
And that would mean multiple trips, multiple times a day, and so I don't expect that your owner's gonna turn it back into a church anytime soon, but I would suspect that they'd have that capacity legally to operate a church instead of four units.
Yeah, they would, as a religious use, but that's not, obviously not happening here.
No, but just the, when we compare what is versus what could... No, but just the, when we compare what is versus what could be, maybe it's not as bad as, as traffic and parking might suggest.
Absolutely. If, if they got a buyer who wanted to put a church in, that could have happened. And also, there was a, it was used for a while for rehearsal, for, uh, stage, stage productions. That's a lot more cars as well.
So it might actually end up being a lesser demand for the neighborhood?
Lesser than some of the potential uses, absolutely.
Right. The last thing is, um, I know you mentioned that there'd be, uh, local jobs because there'll be some renovation. Will there be a facade improvement effort? I know that the paint has been peeling for a number of years. Obviously, the salt water does some damage pretty quickly, but that would make a big difference if it were.
Oh, yeah. I mean, the whole thing will be painted. Um, it's going to be brought back to life. If you look at it now, it looks quite dilapidated. It's kind of sad looking at it now. But no, it'll be brought back to, uh, to its vibrancy that it had before. Again, slight changes, uh, with windows and doors and things like that, and window wells mostly to, uh, comply with code for residential. But, yeah, it's going to look like a church. It's going to be well-maintained, and it's going to be painted.
Blue as well? Still blue?
Yeah, I don't know if it's going to be blue. I'm not sure. Be nice if it was. We can still call it the Blue Church.
Church can't be, you know, something-
Sure about that.
Yeah. Okay. I look forward to seeing the improvements too, so I have no other questions on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Benson?
Uh, one, just one question. Um, do the, um, when you're looking at the picture on Google, do they look to maintain a lot of the greenery to, or anything will be taken down? Will they be adding, um, you know, additional trees or something just to keep it in character of the neighborhood, not just cutting down any of the, uh, like, trees or anything like that?
Yeah, I don't think it's in anybody's interest to clear-cut everything. I mean, I think it makes it more attractive to buyers as well to keep as much green space as you can. So to the extent they can keep green space trees and not cut them down, they will. Because, you know, I think just as a matter of marketing and, you know, you, you want to have as much green cover as possible under the circumstances.
Counselor Benson?
Thank you. Um, talking about the fiscal impact, and you, you touched upon that, and you said, could you elaborate more of what type of, um, intaxable growth could happen for the city? And then also talking about the construction jobs, and I, I mentioned this, that, um, the P and D is, would it be possible to have some of those jobs be local folks, um, getting the construction jobs?
I mean, I could, I could certainly talk to the, uh, the team about that. I know they have regular general contracts they probably work with, but it probably makes sense for them to make an effort to hire local anyway, um, because, first of all, it's going to be more cost-effective. It's going to be more efficient to do that, not, rather than having people come from, out of town. Um, and as far as the taxable value, uh, it's, if it's a four-family, it's going to be worth a heck of a lot more than it is now. And if it's a four condominium units, obviously that's worth more than a four-family in single ownership. So if it's four condominium units, it'll really have a far greater taxable value than it has now.
Counselor Grow?
Yeah, um, there was some, uh, concern mentioned about the back decks. Can you talk a little bit about the need to replace those back decks, what they're for, and how big they're going to be?
Yeah, um, they were, they're, they're as a necessary form of secondary egress. Um, and I want to stress that the decks were there before. If you go up to the site, as you saw on the site visit, you could see where they were affixed to the house previously. So we're going back to what was there before, and they're rather modest. Um, I don't know if, Joe, you could speak to the exact size of those decks?
I'm going to the microphone, please.
Hello. My name's Joe Barrett, uh, twelve Lower Road, Lynnfield, Mass. Um, the size basically is basically the whole width of the church in order to get the two units, because it's going to be split down the middle. And then extending from the back of the house, there's a bump out. We're only going eight feet more than where the bump out is. There's an existing deck that, that is there now that I think goes out seven and a half feet. Uh, so we're only going further than that by about six inches though. But it will be the, the whole back of the house, which is, as you mentioned, there's ledgers on the house that, there was decks up there. They've fallen off since then.
Thank you. Other questions? I will close the public hearing and get the committee report.
Thank you. Uh, committee recommendation on a motion by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Benson, Planning and Development Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that City Council grant to H B Development Corps a special permit, Special Council Permit two thousand twenty-five dash zero zero two for the property located at Washington Street number nine six four, Assessors Map one thirty-nine, Lot twenty-four, in the R twenty district pursuant to Gloucester zoning ordinance section two point three point one seven, conversion to or new multifamily or apartment dwelling four to six units for the conversion to a four-family use and pursuant to G Z O section three point one point six B, building heights in excess of thirty-five feet for the building to remain at sixty-nine point seven feet and pursuant to G Z O three point two point two dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs. For minimum lot area per dwelling unit and minimum open space per dwelling unit as follows. Minimum lot area per dwelling unit in square feet, required dimension is ten thousand. The existing dimensions are unknown. The proposed dimension is two thousand nine hundred seventy-eight with a granted relief of seven thousand twenty-two feet per square, per, per unit, square feet per unit. And a minimum open space dwell, per dwelling unit in square feet of seventy-five hundred is the required dimension. A proposed dimension of one thousand thirty-five feet per unit for a granted relief of six thousand four hundred sixty-four square feet per unit. And to grant a height exception special permit for the sixty-nine point seven feet for the purpose of maintaining the existing dimensions of the six-foot-eight-inch-by-eight-foot-ten-inch steeple and roof as shown on the plan submitted by the applicant entitled City of Council Set nine six four Washington Street, Gloucester, M.A., prepared by Taramina Architects LLC, ten B River View Way, Gloucester, Massachusetts, zero one nine three zero, dated April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. This permit is granted on the basis of plans and elevations dated October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, for plans for nine six four Washington, and submitted to the City Clerk on February third, two thousand twenty-four, entitled Basement Floor Plan-
Twenty-five.
Did I, did I, oh, yes, I did. I was supposed to check that. Uh, February twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, excuse me, entitled Basement Floor Plan, first floor plan, second floor plan, third floor plan, west elevation, east elevation, north elevation, south elevation, and a site plan dated October third, two thousand twenty-four, submitted by the City Clerk on February third, two thousand twenty-five. Subject to new information and/or debate that results from the public hearing, this special permit is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Gilman. Discussion?
On the motion?
Discussion on the motion. Counselor Grow?
Uh, just to repeat a little bit of what Sergeant said. Um, Planning and Development and a number of city councilors in residence, uh, attended a site visit at the end of February on one of the coldest days that I plan to be on outside. Um, where we toured the entire facility, saw the location of the existing building with the proposed interior, uh, changes going to be, um, the nominal changes, to be, be honest, on the outside, because it's an existing structure and it's not being expanded except for the decking. We had a discussion at the P and D level about the regards to the, uh, seven sections of section one point eight point three, which have already been articulated by, um, uh, Solicitor Frontero. The, uh, and I will repeat them just for the sake of, of the, the need for the record. Regards to traffic flow and safety, property would provide a total of eight parking spaces, which is just two more than required by the zoning ordinance, which would lead to less stress on parking on the street, and the hammerhead parking area would allow for residents to pull out onto Washington Street and not back out. In regards to the adequacy of utilities and other public services, the property would be served by municipal water and sewer, all of which, uh, are installed in place, while all other utilities would be private. As to public services, there would be an ample room for proposed part, front parking, for a fart, excuse me, front parking lot to handle ambulances or fire trucks. In regards to the neighborhood character and social structure, the building was part of the neighborhood character, and there's a strong desire within the neighborhood to keep the building as it was visually. The property would also have more space than the majority of multifamily properties in the neighborhood. Uh, in regards to the quality of the natural environment, the site was well beyond any wetland buffer areas and disturbances. The lot would be less than a complete tear-down and rebuild. Uh, potential fiscal impact in temp, would allow for temporary jobs created by the construction, and the increase in taxable value of the site will be, uh, uh, significant. In regards to the vulnerability to flooding, uh, the site is not in a flood zone and is not vulnerable to flooding, so that doesn't apply. And, uh, as Counselor Gilman, in the, uh, Planning and Development Meeting pointed out in Z Z O section three point one point six B, uh, the increase to the height, or the allowance of the height, uh, is existing, so it's not going to be any change in terms of the neighborhood character overshouting or obstruction of use. With all that in mind, um, I support this, uh, application. I look forward to moving forward and, uh, encourage my fellow councilors to vote for it.
Counselor Gilman?
I have a friendly amendment of a one-foot difference in the minimum open space per dwelling, dwelling unit. Um, the required dimension is seven thousand five hundred. The proposed dimension is one thousand and thirty-five, and granted currently says six thousand four hundred and sixty-four. I believe it should be six thousand four hundred and sixty-five with the math. So I think we could do a friendly amendment, that that was a one-foot off, unless the applicant feels that, um, that was, um, an oversight in the proposed dimension.
I would welcome a friendly amendment.
So I don't think we have to move that-
Move the correction to six thousand four hundred and sixty-five square feet.
Thank you. Oh, second. It's friendly. We don't have to go through all that.
No, I'm not trying to like friendly amendments.
Any more discussion? Counselor Memhard, you haven't spoken this evening.
Uh, I, I'm in support of the proposed, uh, special regulation allowing a, a four-unit, apartment in this house, in the, in the, excuse me, in the blue steeple. It's been a long time since I enjoyed dinner there, uh, with the Malinski's, and, uh, it's a interesting, iconic building. It's, uh, fascinating inside and out, and I think that it was a good architecture. A good architect can be a very successful four-unit property, uh, which will be an enhancement to the neighborhood. So I'm in, I'm in support.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Attorney Frontero, you are one of the best attorneys in town, and you've not failed yet. Uh, you continue to represent your clients well.
Thank you.
Thank you for seeing it through this process. I especially appreciate your collaboration with the neighbors to come to a hearing and have people come out in favor in the neighborhood when oftentimes there is concern, there's fear, there's real reasons to be opposing things. And the fact that you've got the majority of neighbors supporting this says a lot about you and the applicant and the due diligence in reaching out to them through this process. Uh, by my estimation, you meet and exceed all of the expectations of the criteria and the zoning ordinance, and I'm going to join my committee members at, my, 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 enjoy, I'm going to join the Planning and Development Committee members in supporting this application. Good luck.
Counselor Gilman?
I don't need to repeat one point eight point three nor three point one point six B because Counsel Grow took care of those. Um, I just want to speak for a moment as the eight-year, um, Ward Four representative for that area. And I have to say that, um, this will be an opportunity to have some additional, um, thoughtfully developed housing stock. It also is a wonderful way to preserve the beautiful character, um, of that building, which was really important to all the neighbors. And, um, I'm proud of us for, um, doing our due diligence to make sure that all the Ts have been crossed and all the Is were dotted, and I feel very comfortable with that. Um, so I wanted to thank the team and the neighbors. Um, and, um, I will be, um, absolutely supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Grace?
Um, I, I think it's great that you're adding, you know, using this, this location to add additional housing there. Um, you know, is it going to be affordable? Not likely. But it does add to the housing stock in general. And, um, if, as people see, um, the thoughtful way that this is being developed, um, I think it can be a, a good mechanism to show people that not all development has to be tear it down and make it ugly. And perhaps it will encourage other people to, um, to say, hey, I think I could do something like that too. So thank you.
Counselor Benson?
Thank you. Um, and I supported this in Planning and Development, and will be supporting tonight. And I think you've made great points about how little there is multifamily units in and around the neighborhood, and many folks that are older adults looking to downsize. This could be an option for them to continue to live in the neighborhood that they've probably lived in all their life. And I also appreciate what you said about possibly hiring some people that are local for the construction jobs. So I really do appreciate that as we continue to try to dr, um, drive up, um, opportunities for people. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you like to call the roll?
Counselor Gross?
Yes.
Counselor Grow?
Yes.
Counselor Majota?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Aye.
Counselor Nolan?
Aye.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes.
Counselor Benson?
Aye.
Counselor Gilman?
Aye.
Counselor Grace?
Yes.
Vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Thank you. We're going to take a three-minute recess. Yep, um, I, I, I make a motion that we take a four-minute recess. Second. A motion made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor, um-
Dylan.
Dylan. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it, nine to zero. All right, if, if the, uh, if there is no objection, I would like to take, um, item, uh, protein behind, public hearing, um, number five, item number five, public hearing twenty twenty-five zero one three. Is there any objection to taking that out of order?
I have none.
Okay. All right, it's, um, to amend, uh, lost code of ordinance, chapter fourteen, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article One in general, by adding a new section, fourteen dash eighteen, use of rodent sides and second-generation anti-coagulant rodent sides or E S G A R S on public property. And I'll entertain a motion to withdraw this.
Mr. President, I move that we withdraw.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Worthley, seconded by Counselor Row. Now, with this withdrawal, and I know we're going to be voting on just withdrawing this motion, but I think it, on, at this time, we can take something a little bit unusual. And if the councilors would like to make a, a brief statement on this, I think that would be appropriate.
Mr. President?
Counselor Worthley?
On the motion to withdraw and on the overall issue, firstly, I want to thank the mayor for taking this seriously and putting it into a, uh, policy instead of an ordinance. Uh, it reflects pretty much word for word what we had proposed and what had come out of the Ordinance Administration Committee. I want to thank the Ordinance Administration Committee for taking it up and listening to the testimony from, uh, our residents who really feel strongly about this, as we do, that this is removing a poison, at least on public property. The goal ultimately is for a statewide ban, and the more cities and towns that adopt policies or ordinances or provisions to support this make it easier for the State House to support this, our legislature to support this. So this is a goal of removing toxins from public property. And instead of doing it as an ordinance, the mayor has decided to take our lead on this and put it in a policy. I thank him for that and appreciate the support from Marianne Boucher, who started the conversation a while ago, Lisa Riggsby, and, um, Caroline Haynes, who has been advocating for this relentlessly throughout the Commonwealth. I'm happy to withdraw it, but also want to just completely add our support to it, just in our words at the very least. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gilman?
Probably about three or four years ago, we had an issue where we felt some, um, mice, um, were being, um, in chipmunks were dying. It was actually in the Anasquam Village area. And I remember feeling so sad for the animals that I saw, um, that were dying. And, um, and then having seen some of the photographs of owls and hawks and eagles, um, and the pain that they go through with rodenticide poisoning is, um, it's just a horrible thing. And they're so much part of the importance, um, of the chain, of the food chain. And without them doing their jobs and the mice and the, um, the rats become even worse than they are. So, um, I think that this is a really good opportunity to, um, make a position, um, whether it be a policy, which I think is fine. Um, and, um, I think it would be really nice to know that, um, our state legislators are working hard to think of ways that they might also be able to extend this to, um, to prohibiting- to think of ways that they might also be able to extend this to, to prohibiting this on private property as well. I know my house has tons of mice and, and we've had a person come out and help us and it's always been mousetraps and we stick with that. And when we need to do some remedial stuff, we use peanut butter and whatever. And it's kind of gross and it's sad because we love everything, including mice, but it's not a good thing when they're kind of going through your house. So I think that this is a good thing and I'm happy that we've taken a leadership role. And I think more education would be great. And it's nice to have Caroline on the Animal Control Advisory Board because we might be able to do some sessions here just for awareness, to let people know that rodenticide is not the way to go right now in their private homes. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Memard.
As, as councillor, I've served as our liaison to the Gloucester Animal Advisory Committee for the last eight, nine years now. And this is something that they studied very seriously and did quite a bit of public outreach and education about. And I, I'm just thrilled that the mayor's office is, is picking up on this lead by these passionate advocates of the concern. And we're actually doing something about it now and doing it on municipal property is a first step and more extensive steps towards just eliminating rodenticides from the local ecology and the food chain is a very important step for all of us. And I'm glad we're making this step forward towards that final objective. Thank you.
Councillor Grow.
Yeah, I just want to add my appreciation to the mayor for taking this up as a policy issue because as it turned out, it's not in the purview of the council to pass an ordinance on this by state law. So it could have either just died tonight, but he, he took the initiative to make it a policy. I think people need to really reach out to our state legislature and, and put some pressure on them in terms of, of making this a statewide issue. Newberry has put forward a home rule petition in order to ban rodenticides within the city limits. I think we should pay attention to how that plays out. And if they're successful, I think we should add our, our voice to that and put forward our own home rule petition if we think that that's a viable opportunity. Because right now, the policy is only on public property, which is great, but it's, 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 it's a bit of a token considering the vast majority of, of the island is, is, is private property. But I, I think any steps in the right direction of getting these poisons out of the, out of the biosphere are positive. So we should keep an eye on this and enact in concert with the legislature if we can.
Councillor Benson.
Thank you. And thank you to the administration for putting forward a policy and to Councillor Worthley for putting this forward. With that being said, is there is pending legislation in the House. And folks that are listening at home, I urge you to contact our state delegation to support the House bill, which was brought forward by state rep James Hawkins. It's House Bill Number 965. So folks that are listening, check that out. This would ban ESCARs, rodent side, if that, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, so, as well. So, but again, I appreciate all the effort and the community who brought this to my attention. I was not aware of, of this deadly poison until I, we had a public comment and then I met with some community members, spoke about this and showed me photographs of, including endangered species that were a risk, as we've seen bald eagles as well. So this is important and this is a good step. And again, I urge everyone to contact the state, our state delegation to support this legislation because that is the way forward is would be state, a state law banning it on private property. Thank you.
Councillor Grace.
I just wanted to give a shout out to Councillor Worthley for, you know, putting this into an ordinance and try to get the ball rolling and for the administration for taking it the next step. Is it the, the absolute solution? No. But if enough communities get involved in this and, and adopt this, then it's, then there will create a momentum that's going, then it will become, you know, statewide. And the collateral damage that is done with these poisons is just unacceptable to, to the bald eagles and the hawks and, you know, any, any other animal that's out there, including our, our domestic animals that if they come across something that they very well could, you know, be subject to the horrific death that these ESCARs do. So thank you.
Thank you. I, I too am very happy that the, that the mayor took this up because it got immediate action where if we had, if we went through the whole home rule petition, it would have been started, this whole process all over again. And it would have been, would have taken much longer. Now we have what was basically in our ordinance is now a policy for the city to adhere to. And, you know, through some fluke of the law, we're not allowed to enact regulations. There's only one agency in the state that's allowed to exclusively regulate the use of rodent sides, which, you know, is, is somewhat of our abnormalities in our state, state laws. So this, having this moved forward is, is immediately is, is a good win for the city. And I, again, I also am glad that Councillor Grace brought up the domestic animals because cats and, you know, even dogs that are on leash. I mean, I know I've had a couple of dogs that, you know, you turn your head and in a nanosecond, they're gobbling something down. And, and so it doesn't necessarily have to be on your own private property. You know, it happens on leash too. And, and these are really, they're dangerous chemicals and we really need to have some way to regulate them. And again, as everyone else said, contact our representatives and Margaret Ferrante and our state senator Bruce Tar. They both have significant levels of influence in the legislature. So let's hope that we can get them to try to move it forward. All right. On, any more discussion?
Vote on the motion.
Right. Any more discussion on the motion to withdraw? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Public hearing number 2025-012, City Council Number 2025-005. Worthley, amend Gloucester Code of Ordinance, Chapter Five, Building and Building Regulations, Article Five, Short-Term Rentals, Section Five dash sixty-four definitions, Section Five dash sixty-six requirements for the operation of short-term rentals, subsection E, H, J, and T, and Section Five dash sixty-nine prohibitions. And I will open the public hearing. Okay, speaking in favors, Councillor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Typically, we have councillors who are sponsoring ordinances to speak from the dais here. I apologize to my counsel, I write that my back is a little bit to him, but I'm going to do my very best to address the whole body directly. I have a speech that I will submit to the record once I finish it. So for the record, my name is Jeff Worthley. I live at Four Hawthorne Road. I do not own nor operate a short-term rental and don't have any intention of doing so in the future. I know each of you, and as a member of this council, I am known by each of you. Even though we often debate, I'd like to take this moment to express my respect, not only to the city council as a body, as an institution, but to each and every city council for your hard work. I have no doubt each of us is doing what we think is in the best interest of Gloucester residents. Thank you to Council President Tony Gross for introducing the first proposed ordinance, which he subsequently withdrew to obtain more input, and the second ordinance, which passed in August of 2024. Neither version of the ordinance had the benefit of public input or testimony as it worked its way through the Ordinance Administration Committee. The public had an opportunity to speak only at the public hearing that the city council held in late August. At the end of a lengthy five-hour meeting, there were amendments proposed in the 11th hour that were significantly impactful and drastically different than what was advertised for a public hearing and quoted multiple times in the newspaper. There was a motion to send the ordinance back to the Ordinance Administration Committee for further review. If you recall, committee chairperson Sean Nolan was unable to attend that meeting due to a family emergency. Out of respect for you, Council President Gross, and your pending surgery at the time, we did not send it back to committee for further review and voted on your proposed ordinance with the late-night amendments, which were far more restrictive than your proposed ordinance. This winter, I proposed some changes to the ordinance, which I believe accomplished the intent of the first proposed ordinance and recognizes the incredibly positive impact our short-term rental owners have on our local visitor economy. After a great deal of analysis, we are back at this again to get this right. And hopefully, the third time is the charm. The Ordinance and Administration Committee reviewed the proposed changes and sought public input, which helped provide a much broader perspective. Thank you to Council Nolan, who had to leave because of his own health situation at the moment. He's okay, but he had to leave. I want to thank him and the members of the Ordinance Administration Committee for their review. I appreciated many of the changes the city council approved in August, and those are untouched in this version. Many things remain the same. The inspection process, the applicability, the permitting and renewal process, the fees, the number of occupants, the requirements to post the trash schedule, noise ordinance, parking regulations, animal control regulations, the requirements to locate fire exits, fire extinguishers, and gas valve shut-offs. And very importantly, the requirement to forbid for-profit corporate ownership, which I, which I believe was the main thrust of the initial proposal. All of that remains. In fact, the original purpose of this ordinance, as defined and adopted, remains. And I quote, "Purpose: This Article Five establishes rules which allow for and regulate the operation of short-term rental units in order to protect the health and safety of guests and residents, maintain the residential use of residential property, and ensure the quality of life, character, and livability of the surrounding neighborhood. Nothing in tonight's proposed ordinance alters that." I believe we all share in the value of not creating a market for outside corporate interests to gobble up residential property and add it to their portfolio due to the desirability of owning rental property in Gloucester. In fact, the vast majority of this proposed version of this ordinance remains the same with three changes, which I believe are three improvements. One, the number of days Gloucester residents who are currently renting out their property can continue to rent out their properties. Two, the grandfathering in perpetuity of Gloucester residents who rent out short-term rentals, as was promised prior to the, prior to the late-night amendment last August. And three, the removal of the cap on the number of permits, at least until we get the data, we sorely need to make that decision. Let me take a step back and share some perspective. For six years, I worked in the tourism industry, working as Economic Development, Development Manager of the KPN Chamber of Commerce, and as the Executive Director of the Salem Chamber of Commerce, serving in the Gloucester Tourism Commission and on the Board of Directors of the North of Boston Convention and Visitors Bureau for six years. The City of Gloucester invests in Discover Gloucester to market to visitors in hopes that visitors choose Gloucester and spend their money at our restaurants, at our shops, in our museums, with our waterfront businesses, and with our artists. I know that there are some people who can't wait until tourism season is over, but we also cannot discount the tremendous positive impact our visitors have on the vitality of our local economy. There's currently no possibility for growth in our industrial parks. Our harbor is heavily restricted. Frankly, there's not a lot of room for error in any sector of our local economy. There's a theme we keep hearing. If we limit vacation rental properties to 120 days, cap this to only 500 residents, allow these for only three years longer, somehow, that magically solves or helps solve our housing crisis. If anyone can find credible, credible data that a homeowner on the ocean in Magnolia, Anasquam or the Backshore is suddenly going to rent their home out long-term and affordably, please provide it because despite great research, it has not been found. In fact, to blame the high cost of homeownership and rents in Gloucester on the 400 or so Gloucester families who rent their property out to guests would plainly not be fair. We can all agree that there's a national affordable housing problem that has impacted Gloucester. And we can agree as well that restrictions on short-term rentals will definitely, definitely not solve that problem. There are some specific ways our city government benefits from short-term rentals. 5.7% of the cost of each room goes to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, some of which may trickle down to us. The City of Gloucester opted into a 6% local option tax, which goes directly into the city's general fund, which, as we all know, pays towards teachers, police, and fire protection, among other city services. Additionally, the 3% community impact fee that our visitors pay goes directly towards affordable housing. I can't imagine this city council would actually vote to stymie this revenue source or is prepared to raise other fees in order to replace this revenue in future budgets. A no vote would be a vote to restrict short-term rentals and vote to cut the only guaranteed reliable revenue source for the Affordable Housing Trust. There has been a disconnect between the original intention of the proposed ordinance and its final version. Initially, this was proposed in a way where every single resident who currently operates a short-term rental would be grandfathered in. In fact, just two weeks before our hearing, Councillor Gross was quoted in the Gloucester Times noting, quote, "that current operators would be grandfathered so the city would not lose any revenue." It wasn't until after the five-hour meeting and after the public hearing was closed that an amendment was made to only grandfather Gloucester residents who've operated short-term rentals for three years more. Had that been advertised as such, many more residents would have raised the concerns we've been hearing over the last few months. And to that point, there's also a real disconnect, real disconnect about who the people are that we're trying to regulate. In our attempt to stop corporate interests from adding Gloucester properties to their portfolios, which we all agree on, we have with this broad brush penalized our local residents, the same people we took an oath to represent. Local government is supposed to be their partner. We've heard from people who can only afford to stay in our community because they are able to rent out their property. We've heard from people, we've heard from families who grew up in Gloucester who want to come home because their parents have passed away, but they're waiting for their children to graduate from their local schools. In the interim, between returning to their roots here in Gloucester, they want to rent out their property between their own visits. We've heard from Gloucester residents who followed the rules, took out a second mortgage, a 20-year or 30-year mortgage to purchase a home to rent out so that they themselves can get ahead. But now their vision and their investment is ruined by the capricious three-year grandfathering. So for the Gloucester residents who have thoughtfully figured out a way to afford their home, pay their rising real estate taxes, rent their property out to people who pay the hotel motel taxes, local option tax, and community impact tax to the City of Gloucester and contribute to our community, we need to ask ourselves, are we really trying to hurt these residents? Do we really want to jeopardize losing these residents? We've worked so hard to expand the visitor season so it's not truncated into the three summer months, and that investment has paid off with year-round restaurants and attractions and year-round jobs that used to be seasonal. Our hotels work to promote Gloucester in the spring and fall months. If we go back to truncating the season to 120 days and a resident determines that they cannot, can no longer cover their costs, what do we think will happen? They will sell their homes and will lose capacity and revenue. Does anyone actually believe that they won't seek full market value for the sale of their property? Earlier, I discussed the negative, sorry, the direct negative impact a no vote would have on the City of Gloucester's budget, but there's a far more important consideration that I must bring to your attention. In addition to Gloucester residents who own property that they rent out, there are lots of Gloucester residents who benefit from the visitor economy and specifically from people staying in short-term rentals. Our Gloucester waiters and waitresses, our Gloucester carpenters, plumbers, and electricians, our Gloucester landscapers, our Gloucester cleaning people, our Gloucester restaurant owners, our Gloucester grocery stores, our farm stand, our farmer's market, and our Gloucester residents who benefit from the work our Affordable Housing Trust is able to do since the revenue collected from short-term rentals goes directly, directly towards that fund. Shortening the season and limiting these industry, I'm sorry, limiting this industry to 120 days and something just switched on my screen here. I'm sorry. Sorry. Truncating the season to 120 days. Sorry, I just jumped to a different spot again. Can we pause my time for 30 seconds? If we go back to truncating the season to 120 days and I read, I'm sorry, I already did that. Okay. Limiting short-term rental property to 120 days likely means more vacant, underutilized property, less income from those jobs these rental homes creates, and does nothing to move the needle on affordable housing while cutting revenue for that very cause. The ordinance before you keeps all of the safeguards to protect the neighborhood character of residential property and the quality of life of residents that our residents expect. This ordinance maintains the protections for safety, noise, litter, parking, and fire protection. And this ordinance prohibits the for-profit corporate ownership of Gloucester residential property. And finally, this ordinance increases the ability of Gloucester residents to afford their properties by generating some income renting out to visitors who choose Gloucester and contribute in countless ways to the economic vitality of Gloucester and contribute in estimated $1.5 million annually to the City of Gloucester's bottom line, either directly or indirectly. or indirectly, by doing these three things. Grandfathering of current residents who are renting out their properties to visitors. Two, removing the cap on the number of units until we get the data we need. And three, allowing current users to rent their properties out for longer than the 120-day limit that we permitted, I'm sorry, we passed in August. I strongly urge you to consider, I'm sorry, I strongly urge you to kindly consider this amended ordinance, which I believe is an improvement to the ordinance we passed late last summer and one that will help Gloucester residents afford to stay in Gloucester while supporting the local economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the proposed amendments? You'll line up if you want. Name and address, people have three minutes.
I'm Michelle Williams, 53 Concord Street. And I'm here representing, well, myself, but also Atlantic Vacation Homes and the many homeowners, workers, and businesses who depend on Gloucester's short-term rental economy. It's nice to be back in front of you. Can you hear me? All right, I'm like right up on it. So I am here in support of the ordinance revisions that Councilor Worthley is putting forward, especially the grandfathering, or expanding the grandfathering of the existing mass tax certificate holders, removing the 120-day limit, and eliminating that 500-unit cap. These changes are necessary to preserve a healthy, fair, and enforceable short-term rental policy. Since 2019, when short-term rentals became subject to occupancy taxes, Gloucester's revenue from lodging tax has grown quite a bit, from about $1 million in fiscal year '20 to nearly $1.8 million last year. And for short-term rentals, as Councilor Worthley reminded us, the 6% local option tax, which is also known as the hotel-motel tax, all of that goes into the general fund, and then the 3% community impact fee goes right to affordable housing. So this is all really critical funding. And with recent events like the teachers' strike, we know that now is not really the time to be limiting one of the city's most reliable and growing revenue sources. Beyond tax revenue, short-term rentals generate local spending at restaurants, museums, gas stations, and shops. They sustain year-round jobs in cleaning, maintenance, and hospitality services. This is real support for Gloucester's small business economy. It's also important to remember that, you know, pretty much all of these homes, at least right now, are not owned by corporations. They're owned by local people, families, retirees, trying to offset their costs, pay their property taxes, et cetera. And allowing these folks to rent responsibly keeps them rooted in the community. To be very clear, we fully support the safety inspections and all of those elements outlined in the ordinance. They're reasonable and necessary, and we believe that they will protect guests and neighbors. In short, Gloucester deserves a short-term rental policy that is safe, fair, economically sustainable. These revisions are a meaningful and balanced step toward that goal. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ally O'Brien, 11 Rockholm Road. I have a short-term rental in East Gloucester, and I run Rising Tide, a short-term rental management company. I wanted to thank you first and foremost for all of the time that has been spent on this ordinance and making sure that we get it right. The ordinance that's in effect right now has a really great permitting process. It went into effect on April 2nd, and when you apply for the permit, you put in not only your short-term rental information, but you put in your owner information as well. So we have instituted already a really great process for collecting information. And for those of you who have been part of these meetings over the last year, at every meeting, we ask for good data to make regulations based on good data. And we now have the infrastructure to collect that really good, strong, correct data. Another piece of the ordinance is the restrictions, the 500-unit cap, the 120-day limit, and the three-year grandfathering period. Those restrictions have a serious negative impact on someone like me, but also for other short-term rental owners and for the stakeholders for our businesses. My cleaning team, who are wonderful Gloucester residents, my repairman, who is so excited that the season's just starting to get up and running. And then a step further, the restaurants and small businesses in downtown Gloucester. The effects of these restrictions are great, and the restrictions are not based on facts. I think that tonight, we should vote for Councilor Worthley's proposed ordinance that keeps the permitting process intact so we can continue to collect this really great data and remove the restrictions that are in place. And once we have that really good data, make restrictions based on facts. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. Counselors, and thank you.
Name and address for the...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Elizabeth Lewis, and I own a property at 15 Rackless Street on Rocky Neck. I'm currently, however, living in Ipswich because I got married a couple of years ago. I've been a property owner for 34 years in Gloucester, since I bought my house, a tiny two-person house. I call it a two-person because it's only 1,000 square feet, so it's not really a two-family. I actually bought it furnished and ready to rent out, with some guests, summer guests, already signed up in the summer of 1991 from the O'Connors. And I was able to afford it because I could use half of it to rent out. And so that's what I've done all these years until two years ago when I got married and moved away. So I'm hoping to be able to do that, to continue to do that. I've paid probably close to $100,000 in taxes over this period of time to Gloucester in addition to hiring city residents, purchasing from city businesses, also for my house. And now, in addition to regular taxes, I pay the 6% lodging tax and the 3% additional occupancy taxes as a two-family owner. So I'm contributing even more to Gloucester, potentially. And as you know that, as it's already been said, this tax goes to the community impact fee, which helps affordable housing. If this proposed amendment isn't approved, then I won't be able to be grandfathered in. I'm hoping that it includes people like me, by the way, who are not a resident now. Good. To continue to do what I'm doing, which is to rent out both halves of my house so that these fees will continue to go to Gloucester, and that would, if I wasn't able to, that would probably be a conservative estimate, a loss of $2,250 to the city of those, just those extra fees. Also, I'd miss out on that income that is planned on for my eventual retirement, possibly postponing it beyond when I turn 70 next year. I hope that with the amendments, I'll be able to rent out both sides, including getting that second permit. I love Gloucester. I want to continue to be able to use my house with my family and friends in addition to renting it out. And so I don't ever plan on turning it into a year-round rental.
15 seconds.
Okay. I only heard about this ordinance by chance last fall, and I see many other owners on VRBO who kind of look like me, small-time owners, not big out-of-state investment companies. And I think that there would probably be a lot more people here if they'd known about it. So I hope I'm speaking for them as well.
Time, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Brigitte Vanderwansum, Three Harbor Heights. Thank you again for looking into this and fighting, all of you. I'm glad that our voices are being heard. I'm in complete favor of permitting and fees and inspections and protecting our community because that's what we're doing here. We want to protect Gloucester and the neighbors. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to be able to rent out part of my home, to have that income to help me improve my property, to have landscapers. I support florists greatly, but boutiques, you name it, all the other things that Councilor Worthley mentioned. The effects ripple deeply, and it's really meaningful. And I think when you have such a strong community as we have, the fact that we can have local contractors and all these people that we support is wonderful. It just strengthens our community. So I hope, the biggest thing, my biggest concern really is that we have accurate data. I've spoken to other people in different parts of the United States, small communities, where they have made legislation and decisions that have really backfired. And citing studies like from McGill, which we now have found out that McGill has rescinded because it was paid for privately. We are up against hotel lobbyists. We're up a big business. And look, we're all, we're allowed to fight for ourselves, and that's what we're doing. So thank you for your time, and I hope that we can come back when we have actual data and make a decision on those facts. Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm short. My name is Lucy Corona. I live in Eight Callers Street, East Gloucester. And I wanted to support the amendment that Mr., oh, sorry. My husband and I invested in buying a new house to keep our family, but making this house short-term rental for a future business. I understand the need of regulations, but I do ask you for your support and let us be able to rent our short-term rental. It will bring a lot of tourists. It does bring a lot of tourists. It brings money to the rest of, to the restaurants, to the beach, to the cleaning people, to the landscapers. And it brings a lot of, I mean, it shows Gloucester the way it really is. People come back to us because they are happy of how they are, you know? We have two years doing this, and now not being able to rent the way it is, it will really affect our economy and my family. So I will please, thank you very much for your time and have a great night.
Thank you.
John and Raquel Frisch, 12 Perkins Road. It's good to be with you. Like many of our constituents here, we also are in agreement that there needs to be thoughtful regulation around short-term rentals. It helps maintain a high standard for the operators of these small businesses and also allows for, also meets market demand for folks that want to come visit this, our home, this beautiful, this beautiful place in Gloucester. We take a lot of pride in what we do. We take it very seriously. We love the city and this town, and we want people to have a great experience when they come and visit it. We employ many local folks, such as landscapers, some of our cleaning folks, Peony Mechanical, Girls Lock Shop. We have two young girls that are local that help us with trash management. And we're, we have a lot of activity throughout the entire year, which was actually surprising when we first got into it. I knew that the summers were going to be in high demand, but we are, even in the wintertime, we are basically booked every single weekend. And that creates economics, economic stimulation in a time where a lot of the small businesses could use it and need it. And so my, I think our specific potential gripe is with the 120-day cap because it really limits our ability to deliver the experience that we want to and also prohibits, I believe, much-needed stimulation in a time period in the off months that otherwise would just not be there. Thank you very much. I don't know.
Yeah, I just want to say that I love being a host. I love showing off the city of Gloucester. We have guidebooks that direct everybody to restaurants, establishments, retail, you know, fishing charters. It is a passion of mine to share that with folks coming out of town. I have a woman that called me today asking how to use the mini splits. Picked the phone right up, I'm explaining how to use our mini splits. She said, "I want to thank you so much. I live in the Midwest. My son lives in Gloucester. I cannot see my grandbabies if I don't have a place to stay. I do not want to stay at a hotel. I'm here for a week. I want a kitchen. I want to relax. I want to be able to invite them over and cook them dinner and give them a break. By the way, I can walk to my son's house. Can I book your house in November?" I said, "Yes, Barbara, you can." I mean, it's really...
10 seconds.
...a privilege and an honor to be a host in the city of Gloucester, and I hope I'm able to continue that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
President, can we get the address? You say Perkins Road?
12 Perkins Road, correct.
Your centennial avenue?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Not street.
Thank you.
Good evening. James Catuso, I own Castleman, in 141 Essex Ave, local hotel owner. Just want to speak in favor and thank everyone for coming out to listen to this potential modification. I think that I did write a letter to the board. If it came to you right, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Zino Mobilia, 13 Middle Street. Hi, everybody.
Into the microphone, please.
Thank you. And I do support the ordinance with Councilor Worthley's amendments. I'm going to be quick. I did register the website. Very good, quick and easy. So applause to whoever did that. My issue is the restraints. The, you know, the grandfathering should be, for those of us that have been doing it by the book, we should be grandfathered in for more than three years. And the 120 days, as many people said, really cuts into, you know, what we do. And my thing that I wanted to get across to all of you is, you know, we don't always rent to strangers. There are many times that I have Gloucester families, people who grew up here, that, you know, for whatever reason have moved away. They come home, they come home for a wedding, they come home for a funeral, they come home for a, you know, summer, you know, for Fiesta or whatever. But they come home and they want to be here in Gloucester. They don't, maybe for whatever reason, don't want to necessarily stay with family, but they want to be in Gloucester. I have repeat customers. This will be my fourth summer doing this, and I have three repeat customers. One just rented for a whole month this summer. I have one that comes at Labor Day and another one that comes at Thanksgiving, and they love it. And Gloucester's a beautiful place, and, you know, if we all work together, you know, with a lot of, you know, the trash stuff and all the other things, I agree with, the inspections, I agree with. You know, I think we can make it all work, you know? So thank you, and that's it.
Thank you.
Brian Smallman, 14 Crestview Terrace. I don't want to be redundant. I'm going to be super short here. My wife and I bought here because we've loved it here for a zillion years. We hope to retire here as well. But I tell you that for all the reasons everybody else who hosts, we all love it. It's a, to get the reviews back from people that have stayed with you, to tell you what a great experience they had, the books that you leave for places to go in Gloucester and all of that, places to eat and go to shop and all that sort of thing, mean a lot to people. You can't have this kind of family experience in a hotel. You can't. You know, having a livable situation like a house, a larger apartment, or whatever you might have, means a lot to people. We have repeat people coming back to see us, too. So I want to thank you, Councilor Worthley, for all your, what you've said and what you're supporting here. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the auditorium speak in favor?
Matthew O'Brien, 113 Mount Pleasant Avenue. I'm speaking in favor also. I think it brings a lot to the town. My Airbnb is booked out for the summer. I don't know where else you could house those short-term people coming to visit, and they spend in the town. They're at the t-shirt shops, they're on the boat tours, they're at all the restaurants. They're spending money in town. And I bought my three-family about a year and a half ago. I had no interest, I had no intentions of using the short-term rental, but I quickly found out, I listed with a realtor, it was up for about three months of different units, I couldn't get anyone in them, so we went down to Action. And Action was like, "No, we want one bedrooms or four bedrooms." And I was like, "Oh, well, mine are two bedrooms." So they reached out to me a week later, like, "We got someone for your unit." I was like, "Perfect." I jumped through all the hoops with Action, and it was about 60 days it took to get all the inspections and all the stuff done. The lady, Marcela, was supposed to move in the next day, and they're like, "Her action funding was just taken away." I'm like, "Oh, no." So I just spent two months with you trying to get people into the place. I spent two or three months before that with a realtor trying to get people in. It wasn't as easy to rent as I thought, so I was like, "Oh, no, I have an expensive mortgage," so I quickly put on Airbnb, and that allowed me to stay here in Gloucester and pay for my place, had it not been for the Airbnb. And I tried all the other ways, too, to help the people of Gloucester with Action, and, you know, they dropped their funding at the last second, and that didn't work. So I tried to work getting local people in it, but it didn't work. I do have a lot of local families that come, that come for the holidays and stay there, people that moved away, but it's been very good, and they spend money in town at, like I said, all the places, and we employ a lot of people in town, upkeeping it, cleaners, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one person online, Ryan.
Hey, everybody. Ryan Furch, can you hear me? Take that as a yes. I live at 11 Rockhome Road with Ally O'Brien, who spoke earlier. I'll try not to be too redundant to what has been said so far. I'd like to offer my support to Councillor Worthy's proposal. My family recently moved to Gloucester full-time, and we're excited to raise our kids here. We work in short-term rental management, partnering with local homeowners, so we followed this process really closely over the last year. As the ordinance started to gain momentum, we tried to reach out to as many Airbnb and VRBO hosts in Gloucester as possible, just to inform them of this change, which was a big surprise for a lot of folks. But what we found after speaking with dozens of these hosts is that the vast majority own just one unit. The vast majority are local or have strong ties to Gloucester, and the vast majority rely on the income to help subsidize the ownership of their home, as we've heard in a number of examples this evening. We've yet to find this corporate investor buying up properties that has been used to justify this ordinance. We consistently found individuals, our neighbors, who proudly host visitors in our great city. You can see this for yourself by visiting Airbnb and just poking around. The challenge for us from day one is that really none of our questions have been answered, namely, what data supports the need for regulations? We've asked this repeatedly over the last year. And, you know, I think it just demonstrates a lack of consideration, that you wouldn't closely consider the data when making sweeping regulations that greatly affect our livelihood. We've reviewed the data, and we would identify just two facts for your consideration. Number one, the number of short-term rentals in Gloucester in 2024 was fewer than it was in 2018 and 2019. At the same time, we've seen housing prices and rents, they've gone up significantly. So it's very difficult to draw a line or a connection between short-term rentals, which have declined, and shelter costs, which have materially increased across the country. The second fact is that for every short-term rental, there are three homes in Gloucester that sit vacant 10 or more months each year. These homes don't contribute to the economy, they don't face any scrutiny, but we don't think they should, but it just puts into context the fraction of Gloucester's housing stock that are renting property out short-term, bringing in revenue to the local economy and the city's coffers. One final point, the 500-unit cap and 120-night limit, they work against each other. If you're capping the total number of rentals, we wouldn't restrict those allowed to operate as well. It would just reduce the economic benefit without freeing up housing for anyone. So we'd highly encourage you to remove the 120-day cap, because it's completely redundant to the 500-unit cap. Like most have said, we're not opposed to guardrails, but we do urge the council to let the permitting process play out and revisit regulation if and when the local data substantiates a clear need. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Do we have any communications?
There were a number of communications that the council received since this was brought forward at ONA. You've received all of them. We have communications from Sharon Hornachary in opposition, Ally O'Brien, who's asking to remove the 120-day cap, Christine Tugus in opposition to the 120-day limit, and also had questions. Elizabeth Lewis was in opposition to the 120-day limit. Maureen Malloy, opposition to the 120-day limit. Nancy Louis Kwan was looking for short-term rental regulations. Linda Amaro and Henry Turgeon sent ideas on how to make this work. Jeff Soklow was in opposition. Bill Kelly was in opposition. Alex Hayman had no opinion. Susan London supports a short-term rental ordinance redo. Nancy Dubois was in opposition. Erin Lamont was in opposition. James Gattuso was requesting a delay, and Larry Mayver supports deleting the 120 days.
Mr. President, if I could make one comment on that for a moment. Most of those, as I've documented here, that were in quote "opposition," they were in opposition to the restrictions. They didn't say, "Vote no" on the proposed ordinance. They're saying, "Please don't regulate this." And I just went through each of those, and you just listed them, and the very first one you said is in opposition to regulations, in opposition to the ordinance.
The amendment.
Correct. The proposed amended ordinance, right. So we've not, we've not received any opposition to reducing restrictions. Every single email we've received over the last four months has been either in favor of this ordinance or in favor of reducing the restrictions, and there's been some confusion of, you know, taking away a negative is, am I in favor of taking away a negative, or am I against?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just to make sure that was.
Because I know we have received.
If we've received them, I have not received an email saying, "I'm imposed to your changes." I've not received any emails.
Okay. To the amendments.
Correct.
Thank you. Questions from councilors? Councillor Worthy?
Raise my hand.
Councillor Grace?
First of all, I want to thank you all for coming out here tonight, and Raquel, super nice to meet you in person. The beauty of ordinances is they're not written in stone, and they can always be tweaked. And as we learn things, we can go back and we can change things, and we can make things better. You know, the goal of this ordinance isn't to stymie the short-term rental market. It's to, A, yes, to prevent in the future, at any point in time, corporations coming in and snatching up property, but it's also to, we have to put a limit at some point in time. It is a desirable location, and if we do not, you know, kind of proactively protect Gloucester, it could be more short-term rentals than homes. You know, it's a stretch, I understand, but my point is, is that we need to limit it, okay? The ordinances that we're putting through here, the changes that we worked on in the Ordinance Administration Committee, on which I sit, protects the people who already have short-term rentals here. It is to grandfather in, because again, we start with something, as we did in September, and we realize, okay, wait a minute, we need to take a look at this, okay? It's not fair to pull the wool out from the people that have been doing this for years. So you are protected in that aspect. If you are, you live in the home that you have a short-term rental, none of this applied to you to begin with. You know, the 120 days, again, it is for people that you will be grandfathered in.
This is question time. Councillor Gilman?
Thank you. So I sat in and zoomed in to the ONA meeting. I've watched the Zoom tape twice. I have read the minutes to, to be so specific, and I also posted them on my city council page today, because there were so many changes and it was confusing. So my question is, as we attack this tonight, I really would like to visualize the changes and do them one by one.
This is questions for Councillor Worthy, the proponent.
Okay. So I guess it's not a question for you, Councillor Worthy, it's a question for Councillor Gross.
Get to that.
Okay. Thank you.
To the extent that I can help with that, I'd be happy to.
Councillor Grow?
I have just a question for Councillor Grace, actually. I've seen several iterations of the amendments, and the amendments to the amendments, and the strikeouts of the amendments to the strikeouts. Is one of the amendments currently on the, to remove the limitation on ownership of more than one non-resident occupied unit?
That would be, they would be grandfathered in at this point, and it would be people after the 4/125, that they would, that would.
Okay, that's for a discussion when that comes up. All right, we're going to make a motion, I'm going to make a motion to divide the question, so that we take up these individually.
Want to close the public hearing first?
Oh, yes, that's a good idea. Close the public hearing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, again, I'm going to make a motion to divide the question.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Gross, seconded by Councillor Majota. Discussion? More than bifurcating. That only means two. All those in favor? Yes, individual.
Do we know how many and which ones?
I'm just going to read them all in order based on.
They're on a template. So, Councillor, City Clerk is going to share her screen. The committee report, I have to add, they voted not necessarily on these individuals, but in the end, they voted on everything, which sort of threw it all into a mixer, and it all came out and said, yes, we, so the committee report is not as reliable as they usually are.
Many recommendations on a motion by Councillor Grace, seconded by myself. The Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council amend the Gloucester Court of Ordinance, Chapter 5, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 5, Short-Term Rentals, Section 5, through 64, definitions as follows. Primary residence, a residential unit in which an operator resides permanently for at least six months out of 12 months' period. Primary residence may only be established by a natural person or persons and not by LLCs. Add, for-profit corporations, partnerships, joint ventures, delete of, add, or other similar entities, add, except for that dwellings owned by estate planning trusts may be considered primary residence based on the proof of residence requirements set forth below. Primary residence shall be demonstrated by showing that as of the dates of usage as short-term rental and dates the operator has residing in said residential unit for six of the past 12 months, or the operator intends to reside in the residential unit for six of the next 12 months, in accordance with proof of primary residence requirement set forth below. And I submit.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Majota, seconded by Councillor Worthy. Discussion.
Mr. President, a question. We have Suzanne on the line, if we have any questions on legality issues.
Yeah, Suzanne. All right, legal counsel Suzanne Egan is online, if we have questions about any legal matters on this.
I have a question about the language that's being added. For-profit, I'm not sure that nonprofit corporations are big in the vacation rental business. Shouldn't it just be corporations by the addition of for-profit? I don't care who answers it.
You were addressing to Suzanne, but I propose, I'd be happy to answer it. I do believe that our, the state law, as Councillor Gross has pointed out, does exempt some nonprofits, but to be certain that the focus is on eliminating for-profit ownership, and it may not be, as you said, that there are nonprofits in the vacation rental, but there are nonprofits in the short-term rental business, right? Someone who's looking for a rooming house between, you know, they just got divorced, or they're whatever, they may be a domestic situation. They are, too, also short-term rentals, and although state law.
Rooming houses are not short-term rentals. They're not considered a short-term rental, and they're not covered the same way.
Yep. So state law does exempt some of the short, some of the rooming house kinds of scenarios. I just want to be certain that we're focusing on eliminating the possibility of for-profit corporate ownership, which I think we all agree on, and not sweeping up somebody in this, an organization, and it could be a nonprofit, we think, action, but it could be a nursing home, it could be assisted living, that has a short-term rental scenario that we're not trying to regulate, and it's not a vacation home, but it's still a rental unit. And so I just want to, there's no harm in putting it in. It doesn't take anything away, it just doubles down on us not supporting for-profit corporate ownership of short-term rentals.
Other question I have is estate planning trusts. I think there are trusts, but are there estate planning trusts? I don't think that's, I think you can strike a straight estate planning and just put trusts. I don't think a state planning trust exists. If I'm not, well, send that to Suzanne if we could.
Yes, thank you, Councillor Gross. So there are.
Grow.
Excuse me?
Councillor Grow.
It's me.
I'm sorry, Councillor Grow. So the, I think the issue with this language is that it talks about estate planning trusts, which is a term that isn't used in a deed or a, an article that we would be able to look, when somebody goes to register their short-term rental, there's nothing that says a property is held as an estate planning trust. That's more of an intent to enter into a trust. So that language would require some official within the city to make a determination whether the property was held as an estate planning trust, as opposed to just a realty trust for business purposes, for profit purposes, or for tax purposes.
We could, we could lose the estate planning and allow trusts to be standalone alone and still have the same effect.
But yes, you could just add realty trusts. So typically, if it's a realty trust, that would be a piece of property held in a trust, which, for any purpose whatsoever, it could be to avoid, you know, it could be for a number of things.
Did you do it to require it to be a family trust?
Well, that you're still, that you're still requiring a public official, presumably the building inspector, to look into that trust and make a determination if it's a family trust or not. All you really look at, so if you distinguish this from an LLC, a corporation, or a partnership, that's going to say it in the name of the owner. So it's going to be, if it's a corporation, it's going to be ABC Inc., means corporation, or ABC, LLC. And then you know that it falls within that. You could hold real estate in a trust, which would be a family trust, without calling it the family, ABC Family Trust.
So would you recommend, if we were to vote for this positively, to leave that language as it's written now, or to change it?
So I, my recommendation would be if the council would like to exempt a property held in a trust, to delete the, sort of, the definitional language and just put "held by a trust."
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President? Thank you, Suzanne. I do have a question on this, and I appreciate Councillor Gross's question. Thank you, Suzanne. I do have a question on this and I appreciate Council Gross's question. My thinking was that the scenario where you have a family who has their house owned at an estate planning trust because they want to avoid a nursing home.
There is no such thing as an estate planning.
I've read one today.
Is it a revocable trust?
There's revocable and irrevocable.
Right, those are the trusts, they're not called state planning trusts, though. They may be.
The document is called that.
The document might be, but what's registered, if the registry of deed would not be an estate planning trust. So that's, that's.
Okay, can I explain? Let me explain the problem I'm trying to solve and it may be solved with just the word trust.
Right, exactly.
But it may be, can I just ask that question to Suzanne?
Yep.
The scenario I'm considering is when you have a family who wants to avoid a nursing home taking their property, so they put their house in a trust and then at some point, maybe the families, they've downsized, the kids want to rent the unit, the building out and it's still held in that sort of interim stage of an estate planning process. I've seen them listed as estate planning trusts, at least in the documents. Are you suggesting that there is no ownership or deed ownership, deeded ownership of an estate planning trust? Because if that's the case, that solves that there is no problem. But it's that interim when there's a family that's, you know, parents, they're trying to avoid a nursing home taking their property and the kids want to rent the property out in the interim. That's what I'm trying to capture here.
It could be called for planning purposes in estate planning.
So my, my, my advice is, is that once you start getting into the reasons that property is held in a certain manner in your ordinance for registering a short-term rental unit, then you're asking somebody to make that, somebody has to make that determination. What you really want to do is you want to make an ordinance that you can enforce and on its face. So if you just want to say property held in trust, then it's going to, may capture more than that estate planning trust, but it's not going to eliminate it. But you really don't want to have the, yeah, public official making a determination as to whether something is held for the certain purposes. So you could convey. Does it solve the problem by just saying?
I'm sorry, it does solve the problem that I'm trying to solve and I think it captures everything, so thank you. I appreciate it.
Council Grow got that same answer.
Yeah, I think, and I think I'd like to make a motion that we amend, except that dwellings owned by estate planning trusts be amended to accept that dwellings held in trust may be considered primary residence based on the proof of residence requirements set forth below.
Second. Okay.
In this amendment also, uh, we don't need the for-profit as stated, this is about residential unit. So if you wouldn't have for-profit here, it would be, we're describing a residential unit and the residential unit describes many things that are not-for-profit under that state general law. For sixty-four G, section two, so I think that covers it. So I would also. Well, we need to vote on one amendment at a time. Yep, so.
This is to take.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the same paragraph.
This is to take the family, the estate planning trust, the language out and change it simply to held in trust. Correct.
She's written that up, she just did that. But the dwellings held in trust.
What's that? Oh, I can't read that too.
By Councilor Majota. So let's just vote on this and then we'll update the other one.
Oh, any more discussion on the trust?
If I may, what is the, what is the objective to having the word trust in here? What, like the changes to this, what are you, what, what are you trying to accomplish?
Let me ask your, answer your question, question. I had put in trust.
Welcome, Scott. So obviously, you, you had the change, like it's estate planning trust, but with that being said, like what, what's your goal here?
So sometimes property is held in trust, it's owned in trust. You could have a family disputes, right? Both children want to buy it and they're fighting in court over it and it's sitting vacant.
Shut off the laptop, maybe.
Okay. Least I can do. Parents pass away, they've got two children. One lives in Gloucester, one lives away and they want to, I want to come, I want all the house. And they, things are held in court for years sometimes. So they reach an agreement, they say, well, while we're battling this out, we want to rent the property out and not leave it vacant. Well, the way it was written before, a trust would not be considered a resident. Now we're saying, if this passes, that if it's held in trust and proof of residency is basically, it's not a corporation, then it would still be eligible to be rented out as a short-term rental and that would add the vitality, all the things that we're talking about, but it wouldn't leave a place vacant while it's being battled out.
Suzanne would like to weigh in.
May I ask?
Hold on, Suzanne, Suzanne has her hand raised.
To solicitor after you.
Thank you. So my suggestion is to say, except that, except, it should be, except for dwellings held, held in a realty trust. As opposed, held in trust, so you want to be specific, you want to see, what you'd see on a deed is that it would be a realty trust and you just want to make this simple, you want to make the, right, you want to make it simple for everybody to be able to register their property for the building inspector to see if somebody is in compliance. So you would, you'd want to put that specific language in there.
I would defer to our attorney for the proper language on everything.
Second, if I mean them, on.
Family trust.
Realty trust. Realty, R E A L T.
I'm okay with a friendly amendment on this amendment with those changes, may we, Council President?
An amendment on this.
Can I just do a friendly amend, change this amendment that we're just, that we've already voted and seconded?
Just correcting the language, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
Yep, yep, yep.
I'll be supporting this.
Hey. I, I, but it's still, no matter what, a person has to be attached.
Still the definition of what a residence.
So, yeah. Okay. Any more discussion on this?
So just so I understand, because from what you were just speaking to, Council Worthy, is you're saying, except, so real estate, so a trust cannot be considered a short-term rental, so say yours.
Oh, no.
Okay. Oh, it can be considered, okay, because I wasn't sure what you were saying, because, so it can be.
Can be, but it still has to have proof of residential occupancy.
Okay.
So it can't be a trust that's a for-profit corporation. That's still eliminates, this is when you have a family trust or some trust in between ownership that's still held by a family, they can rent it out because it's a residential use.
Okay.
Okay.
Many, many properties are held in trust without any family disputes or anything, they're just a trust set up. So many, many, it doesn't even have to be inheritance, it can just be.
Just easy example, people know.
So lots, lots of properties, if you look at the real estate page on sales, you know, realty trust. Is there on at least one of them? So.
No, because what, what I'm trying to, what I, and I understand that, but what I'm trying to understand is you're saying that if, say, someone is to pass away and it's, it's now in a trust and it's competing between two different people.
Doesn't matter.
It's an example.
And you're saying those, that, that one of them would be living in it or not living in it, what?
We're saying is that the beneficiaries of that trust could still rent out a property for a residential use and it's not a for-profit corporation at that point.
We're not, we're not dealing with specific family disputes.
I understand, I know, I understand that, but I'm just, what I'm trying to understand is with someone, with this being a trust, someone is living, is, so we're talking about primary residence, would one of those people be living in that, living there? That's what I'm trying to understand.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
I mean, they're dead, they're not living.
Question?
One more discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh.
Hey, it's, um, it, it, motion passes. Seven in favor, one opposed and one absent. I would like to make an amendment that we remove the for-profit out of this, out of this amendment on primary residence.
Second.
Discussion.
We're still eliminating, we're still prohibiting for-profit, we're just not duplicating, making it duplicative. Got it.
It's defined elsewhere. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes eight to zero, one absent. Okay. On the original motion, so we don't need to remake the motion. Right. Okay, on the original amendment.
This paragraph.
On the original motion on the amendment. Okay, any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Eyes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Next, Council Majota.
Residential unit, a dwelling classified under state building code, code as residential use, used as those terms are defined, but excluding units that are owned by a, add for-profit corporation designated as affordable or otherwise income-restricted or graduate-living complex, elderly housing, group residence, homeless shelter, temporary dwelling, structured transitional housing and auxiliary dwelling unit. These terms shall not include a hotel, motel, or any other non-residential use in all other accommodations except under GLC sixty-four G, section two.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Majota, seconded by Council Worthy.
Move the striking of for-profit.
Motion to strike for-profit made by Council Grow, seconded by Council Gilman. Discussion.
I think the intention here is to keep the language consistent. I think that's something that makes Suzanne approve of.
Jason made the motion. No.
Council Gross, is this where you said it's defined later or is this?
Yes, it's defined and then it's, it's defined also in general law, chapter six, sixty-four G. It references what is exempt.
So the addition of for-profit, we're taking that out because it's still in general law?
Right, it is in general law and for-profit is kind of a global undefined. We would have, if we, we would have to have a definition of what's for-profit.
I just want to make sure we're not including nonprofits as not being exempt from this, but the national law does that.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Now on the main motion as amended. Aye. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion's been made, um, eight, it's been, passes eight to zero, one absent. Council Majota.
Many recommendation on a motion by Council Grace, seconded by myself. The ordinance administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend that Gloucester Court of Ordinance, Chapter Five, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article Five, Short-Term Rentals, Section Five through sixty-four, definitions as follows. Further order that the, that the Gloucester Court of Ordinance, Chapter Five, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article Five, Short-Term Rentals, Section Five through sixty-six, requirements of the operation of short-term rentals be amended as follows. E. An operator may only register to operate one add non-primary dwelling unit as a short-term rental if any operator owns two or more non-primary properties, owns one and is listed as a manager or agent for a second that is owned by an LLC. For example, the operator must choose one of the, one or the other to be registered as a, add non-primary short-term rental. No operator should have more than one legal, regal title or beneficial interest in any dwelling unit used for short-term rental except as provided for above. An operator may hire a property manager, property management company to list and manage short-term rentals, but the registration must be in the operator's name. An operator may hire a property management company to list and manage short-term rentals, but the registration must be in the operator's name. Add applicable to units registered after four through four one twenty twenty-five. Am I doing all of them, I just do one at a time? And I so move.
Second. Mr. President. Is there a duplication of the sentence at the end of that paragraph? It seemed like it was exactly the same and you read it twice.
It might have, I don't think.
No, no, you read it correctly, it's, it's written twice. An operator may hire, and then an operator may hire again. So friendly amendment to just delete the second sent, the second to last sentence. An operator may hire a manager, property management company to list and manage short-term rentals simply because it's listed two times in the rule. But the registration must be in the operator's name, that, that's the repetition.
President, I have a question for you.
Hey, go ahead.
Suzanne. You have a, any weigh in on the term non-primary dwelling? Do you have any language that you prefer?
Um, yes, so in order to be internally consistent with the definitions in the ordinance, I suggest that those amendments actually read non-primary residential units. So that that is the same language that goes back to the definitions that we use.
So it would say non-primary residential units as opposed to non-primary dwelling units.
Exactly.
Like to make a motion to amend, uh, the motion to change the three references to non-primary dwelling unit to non-primary residential units.
Second.
A motion was made by Council Grow, seconded by Council Worthy.
Does the short-term rental get taken out?
Yeah, that's a good question.
No, it doesn't.
The third one? You don't change that?
I don't believe it does.
So we'll stick it to the, just the two that, uh, we have there, non, non-primary residential unit and then the second one would be non-primary residential property? No?
I don't think you want to use property because you're talking about units. You don't have, you don't have a definition for non-primary residential property. You only have that for non-primary residential unit.
Not, the third one is listed as non-primary short-term rental. I don't believe you intend to change that to non-primary residential unit, or do you?
So I, so I believe what the intent of this section is, is to address, is to regulate non-primary residential units. And if that's the case, you want to use that term throughout the paragraph. The same, the same consistent term throughout this paragraph. So anywhere where it makes, where you're trying to regulate that, you want to use that specific language.
It would be the two places and leaving non-primary short-term rental alone.
Yes. Well, let's just say.
Would you say non-primary under short-term rental, you'd say non-primary unit as well and stricken short-term rental?
So the, the sentence read, so if we read the sentence, it makes, it seems to me it makes sense to have that short-term rental.
Okay.
Included. Because you're talking about, is, because if you use the phrase, operator must choose one or the other to be registered as a non-primary residential unit. I see, maybe, all right. I see, maybe, all right, so maybe you're right, sorry. I'm going to change my mind there. I think taking short-term rental makes sense.
So we'll just do the two. So take out short-term rental, or?
Yes. Yep.
Eliminate short-term rental.
Exactly.
And this is for solicitor, like, consistency purposes?
Completely for consistency purposes, so that people can, we can understand what the intent here is.
Of course.
Do a friendly amendment on this amendment? Would that change?
Everybody okay with that? And we keep all three because they're, that's what the definition is in the definition line, as it's a non-primary residential unit.
So for the sake of clarity, can we read this? An operator may only register to operate one non-primary residential unit as a short-term rental. Yeah. I'm right. Residential unit as a short-term rental. If an operator owns two or more non-primary residential units, owns one and is listed as a manager or agent for a second that is owned by an LLC, for example, that operator must choose one or the other to be registered as a non-primary residential unit or short-term rental. Residential unit, okay, non-primary residential unit. Yeah, I know, I agree. I'm just trying to get the language down. So that would be it.
Operator may hire property management, that was strict, strict.
Because it says it.
Because of duplication, right. So we haven't talked about the second change on this yet.
Can everybody see that, or do we have to move that back? About over here.
I guess you have my screen up.
Scott has his screen up, so he doesn't need that. We all know that. It's just the amendments on the
Big screen here that I can see perfectly.
Just amending the three nonprimaries, right?
Sorry, I've given you all my back.
Right, but I have another motion to make after that, so.
All right, so on the amendments to, to fix the non-primary residential unit language, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, eight to zero, one absent.
I'd like to make a motion to remove applicable, applicable to units registered after 4-1-2025.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Grow, seconded by Councilor Gilman.
Councilor Grow.
Yeah, I, I think that the main, uh, main point of this whole paragraph is to reduce the number of units that are owned by any individual, and I, I think that I'm going to have issue with, with the grandfathering phrase, uh, section later on, but since this is being added, it effectively grandfathers in, somebody can own 20, or as many as they have by, by April 1st, so I think if you're going to deal with grandfathering, then you deal with it in the grandfathering clause, not in, in the, uh, in the, uh, this paragraph. So I'm saying, take that out, we can discuss grandfathering afterwards, but I don't want to have a secondary grandfathering clause in there if we move to take that out later on.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Councilor Worthley.
Thank you. I don't believe I made that as part of my order. But the so-called grandfathering clause only applies to two sections of the ordinance, I think G and H, and I don't know if the intention would be to include Section E, so if it's a question of we don't want it to be duplicative, I understand that. But I don't know where this actual sentence came from. The applicable to units registered after 4-1-2025. It came out of O and A on people owning more than one.
The grandfather, the people in that already have, you know, like, so that the people that already have, they are, they, they just do a status quo, and it's going forward from this point on that they would not be allowed to have more.
So, just so I understand that, Councilor Grow, I'm okay. In this case, the amendment from O and A, Ordinance Administration Committee, is so that if you already own more than one, you will be able to continue to own more than one. And Councilor Grow's amendment is to make it that if you own more than one now, you can't own more than one now. Is that the correct understanding?
The way I heard it was that it, while there is debate on whether he agrees with it or not, because he says, you know, that what his point was, is it doesn't, does not belong here. If it was going to be anywhere, it would be in J, the existing unit section of the ordinance that has the three-year portion now.
So I think if we're just looking for clarity's sake, then we would potentially amend J to include this section if people wanted, if a council wanted to exempt people who have more than one unit, but not have it in this paragraph.
Correct.
Okay, so we can discuss and debate that issue when that comes up?
Yes.
Fair.
Yeah.
That works for me.
Everybody understand that?
We might need you.
Hold on for a second.
Just need some water.
Apparently not.
We have enough to vote on it.
Applicable voting on it. All right.
Well, I mean, if it, oh, you don't have, if there's not a majority, then we just come back and okay.
And then, once he gets back, can we just go over why, what we're voting on again? Can you just explain what we're voting on again?
So
or anyone, you, Jeff, or Jason?
Oh. This in this, to have it in Section E, like it is now, may not be the appropriate, is not the appropriate place for it because we have a Section J that has, that deals with existing units. And right now it has a three-year sunset clause, and you would add this Section E to Section 566G and 566H.
Okay.
So you're just putting it in the appropriate place, removing it from here. Do you understand what we're doing?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Sorry, I spent long, I needed a little more water.
Suzanne, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to make sure that what we're doing is consistent with what your intent is. So I, and just so that we all understand, because with what E refers to is how many units you can register, right, and what type of unit you can register. If you're, if you want to protect units that are already registered prior to the, essentially the adoption of these amendments, then I would think that you would keep that for E. Because if you, in J, you don't refer to E as having protected units, and so my concern would be that that would be, there would be some inconsistency that people would question, well, what if, if I'm, if E applies to me and J doesn't, which one applies? So I actually, if you want to protect units from having, being affected by this ordinance, that, the units that were registered prior to the adoption of this ordinance protected and not regulated by this ordinance, I would keep that in. If you don't, then you could take it out, but that's going to be the effect of keeping that language in, does that make sense?
I have, I have a question about that, if I could. Is it all right?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the intention, I, I think of the grandfathering clause, when we discussed it, when we voted on it, was to hold harmless for a certain period of time all the existing registered owners of whatever units they had. So if they had one unit or, or five units, they were held harmless for a period to end three years from the day of the, of the, um, uh, law going into effect, so that people had the opportunity to make decisions that were applicable to their particular situation. And I'm just, I'm just saying that, I, I'm just wondering, how do we, how do we do that? Because I, I agree, if, if, if you say it's applicable only for registered, units registered after 4-1-2025, that doesn't, that's, that's a permanent condition, right? So if we, if we eliminate grandfathering clause of three years, or, or at the end of three years, we don't eliminate the grandfathering clause, but at the end of three years, they would be subject to all of the regulations, or would they be subject to all the regulations except the ownership regulation?
So I, I think, if you're, so I think that this language relates to this new language that says that units registered after 4-1-2025, the, to, and I'm referring to making it internally consistent because later on, it talks about being registered with the state, 4-1-2025, and that's what this language would refer to. So I think that, that, that that's the issue, is what, what does it really refer to? It's referring to units that have been registered with the state prior to 4-1-2025, and you don't have that three-year sort of protection there, but it's consistent for, like, in perpetuity, right? There's no, then, then you'd want to keep it. You just wanted to have the same language in all your sections.
But the net effect of that, if we were to leave that in there, would be that anyone who was registered prior to April 1st, 2025 can have as many units as they owned at that time.
Exactly.
They couldn't, they couldn't then, so if I came in on April 2nd, I, I could only have one unit, but everybody who came in on April 1st or before could have as many units as they wanted if they owned it at the time.
So the net effect would be if I owned, if you owned four units, and they were all registered with the state on today, and then tomorrow, the ordinance goes into effect, and then tomorrow you say, oh, I'm going to register my units locally, you would say, I have all my units registered with the state, these are protected.
Is it?
Does that make sense?
I see the fatal flaw.
My question, and Suzanne, thank you for that clarity. Everything you said, though, was for someone who currently has registration with the state, and the language here says after April 1st. But I think you said prior to the enforcement of this ordinance, or the implementation of this ordinance. So is it before or after? Whether it's the state or locally, I think we're trying to get this to be registered with the state, because most people are already registered with the state, but is the question before or after?
If you read, if you read the Suzanne, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but if you read that section of the ordinance, it says that an operator may only register not, you know, non-primary units. So it's saying, can only register one. So it's saying that but it, what this says is that it's only applicable to people after the, the public registry of lodging operators' registration and not, because if it was the city registration, nobody's registered.
No one is registered, right. So we do need to make this consistent by saying registered with the state.
Yes.
And I still wonder if the question is after April 1st or prior to April 1st?
Oh, prior to April 1st.
Prior to the implementation of this ordinance, right, I'm trying to
Well, that's, I'd be prior to the enactment of this, or as of date.
We're saying after. So if you were running these, these, these units with the state, and you're registered prior to April 4th, you wouldn't be registering again after the first date, would you? I just want to make sure we're creating another I think it should be, or as of the enactment of this
The motion on the table is to strike.
And the recommendation from the lawyer, our lawyer, was to not strike.
That is the motion on the table, is to strike it out of this section.
We have Suzanne repeat her, her, her effect of what striking it means.
We can vote on that motion to strike, and then we can entertain another motion. If it, you know, to change it.
Can I have Suzanne repeat the, the consequences of striking it versus leaving it?
The consequence, so this is, so so the reason that I was addressing this, right, is to make this an internally consistent ordinance. So you have language in J that you were just saying, you think the language in J would cover E. And J, I don't think that's correct. I think that if you want to have the same restrictions or the same protections for registering a unit on the units, no, existing units, regardless of how many you hold, I think you need to include that in E, or, in the alternative, amend J to include E. Because I think E is you, you have to have it in both. If you don't have it in this one, then you're going to protect existing units, but then you're going to have this strange regulation on non-primary residential units. Do you, do you understand what I'm saying? Does, am I making sense, I guess, is what I
Yeah, I guess I just thought that the original intention of, of this paragraph was to limit ownership to one unit per person, so that you didn't have the potential for someone to come in and buy four, five, 10, whatever number of units. And this strict, this was designed to, to limit the number of units that anyone could, could own that wasn't a non-primary residential unit. Not that they would limit anything to do with residentially partial, uh, living in it, or living in it all the time, but the non-residential units. So if we strike that, basically, we, we give up that aspect of the overall ordinance.
Mr. President.
For existing units, yes, for units that have exactly, right, for existing units, right, that are owned by more than one person, that are non-primary residential units, those restrict, if you have language, you have this, keep this language as is presented, then those units are not restricted. Because they're, it's only applicable to units that are going to register locally once this ordinance is adopted.
I, I guess I would rather see it stricken in E and added to J, so that that was covered under the same umbrella.
Right, Suzanne, any recommendations that we don't do?
I think she said we could.
Just said that you, if you take
Yes, I did say you could do that. Yeah, I just
Add it into E, add it into J. Potentially exempt
At, right, add E into J.
The motion on the floor is to strike applicable to units registered after April 1st, 2025. Correct, from Ms. Burke.
Yes. All right. Any more discussion on the motion? Everybody know what we're doing?
May I just clarify, Suzanne is okay if we eliminate this? That's the last thing I just heard, is that correct?
She said if we wanted to put it into, into J, yes.
Okay.
Can I amend the amendment to say and move it to Section J?
Oh.
No.
No, we don't need that. We don't need that. We don't need that in an ordinance.
I just want to make sure we don't get it when we get to J.
Well, when you get to, when we we're going to be to J, we're taking up J.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, eight to zero, one absent. And now, we vote on the main motion to accept
the dwelling unit as, as amended.
Any more discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it, eight to zero.
H.
Short-term rental of a non-primary residential unit, short-term rentals, add, registered with the state after four one twenty five shall not exceed in the aggregate one hundred and twenty consecutive or non-consecutive calendar days per year when the op, when the operator is not occupying the residential unit during the entire term of the short-term rental. And I so move.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We had a little discussion about after or as of as a differentiator. And I wonder if this is the place where we would bring some clarity to that.
Counselor Grow.
Well, it, it's already after four one two thousand twenty five, so the chances of someone being able to register as of four one twenty twenty five would violate the laws of physics.
No, because they're already registered with the state.
It says registered with the state.
Right.
Yeah. So if it's registered, add, register with, I see what you, wait a minute, no.
Shouldn't be after.
Not violating any laws of physics here.
I'm confused because if they've, if they've registered after the state, so they, if they, if they registered yeah, it should be, well, no, the, the point of this was to grab anybody who came in after four one.
Make sure that they, that was worth a hundred and twenty days. There was no gray area there. You know, once the ordinance, once the regulation kicks in, it's a hundred and twenty days, and there's no grandfathering after that.
Intention is, if you're registered with the state before this ordinance or before the, the September ordinance went into place, you would be grandfathered. Right, that's why we need to change from after to as of.
Registered as of.
Oh, because if you did it registered as of, then they'd be grandfathered in. It's after, it's, it's when the regulation kicks in on April the first. And for every day thereafter, they can only have a hundred and twenty days.
Registered is a past tense word, so if they're registered as of April first with the state, they would be exempt from this clause. Right, can you hear me?
Or you could change it to like who is registered or who registers with the state after four one twenty five. I mean, but it's basically, what this is saying is that this from four one twenty five on, there is no grandfather.
Right, I get that, sorry. So that's
The only change, the only amendment in here is registered with the state after four one twenty five. There was no other change in the amendment.
What we're saying is, if you were registered before, this doesn't apply to you.
Correct.
The grandfather clause, intentively. Should we discuss at one point if we could tighten this up and you felt
Correct, so whether or not that needs to be here too is another question, because we, we, you know, J is next, and that's where we're going to seriously discuss an awful, seriously discuss an awful lot of this. Suzanne.
Yes. So in this one, I mean, I can see what you're, what you're saying, what Counselor Grace has explained, I think, is accurately reflects what this um, section does, is if you register after four twenty twenty one, you can't exceed a hundred and twenty days. So all of those registered with the state prior to four one two thousand twenty five are not restricted. You could all, you, you, you do have you could also delete it here and add it to J. And that would also cover that. So you're, you see, you'd be going along and saying, here are all your regulations, and then except existing units that are registered with the state as of April one two thousand twenty five, the following sections do not apply.
It does say that in, in J, it says shall not be subject to sections five, six, six G and five, six, eight. It's already addressed in the next paragraph.
Okay, then you have covered it, and this would be, this could be considered redundant.
And how do you differentiate what's not grandfathered?
Can we combine H and J?
Okay.
So
Where did this language come from?
This is registered with short-term, it's just registered with state after, that came out of, that came out of O N A. That, that, the language registered with the state after four one two thousand twenty five.
The motion is to add that language, and no vote would be to leave it the way it was previously written. Correct?
In front of you right now is the recommendation that
Adding it.
Of adding it.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Do we vote?
Not our motion.
Well, I guess we can, we can, yeah. We don't need a motion to add it.
It was already added at O N A. That is the motion. This is just motion is to add it.
Actually, the motion is to include section H in this motion.
No, the motion is to add registered with the state after four one two thousand twenty five. No, that's the addition.
Can we get clarity from the clerk?
It's, it is we're voting on, on this in its entirety, correct?
Yes, so with O N A, the language where it says add, the language in blue is what O N A added and moved forward to city council as a recommendation.
The easiest way to deal with this is to strike that, if that's what we want to do.
Right, and then cover it in the next section.
The easiest way to do it is to have an amendment on the amendment.
And then what happens to H?
I move that we remove registered with the state after four one two thousand twenty five.
Second.
I just want to make sure we don't make a mistake here.
Hold on.
The president.
Yep.
So just so we don't make a mistake that's either intended or unintended here, at O N A, committee added in add registered with the state after four one two thousand twenty five. If we strike that, then what remains is what we voted on in August until or unless we add an exemption in section J to this section.
You got it.
Correct.
Yeah, and I'm surprised this even came out as a motion, it is in the next section, so. Okay.
Why do we need to include it? Aren't we just deleting it?
Motion on
That's
That's the amendment on the amendment.
Right, okay.
Did somebody make that
I did.
Yeah, Jason did.
Okay, the only amendment is, is to, okay, the only amendment is to strike registered, okay. Very good, thank you. Any more discussion on that? All right, all those in favor?
Where the rubber meets the road.
All right, up. I met. Just so we see exactly what we're doing here. There's what it says, back to the orig, okay. All right. All set? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Eight to zero, one. I knew that this was going to be
Okay, I'll do my best here.
J. Existing unit, delete. For three years from the effective date of this article, the current owner of an existing short-term rental that holds a valid up-to-date Massachusetts Department of Revenue D O R certificate of registration as of effective date of this article shall be subject to all sections contained herein, except shall not be subject to section five through sixty six G and five through sixty six H. This exception shall not transfer, transfer with ownership of property, ownership as defined in section five sixty six J. Three years from the effective date of Article Five Short-Term Rentals. All short-term rentals owners shall be subject to the limitations stated in section five through sixty six G and H. Add existing owner occupied and non-owner occupied residential units that hold a valid up-to-date Massachusetts Department of Revenue D O R certificate of registration as of the four one twenty five effective date of this article shall be subject to all sections contained herein, except shall not be subject to section five through sixty six G and five sixty six H. This exception shall not transfer with the ownership except within the family unit as defined in section five through sixty six J. Delete. T, the number of non, oh, sorry. Never mind, I didn't say that, and I so move.
Second. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to add sections E and J to that same def, I'm sorry, E and H to the same definition.
H is already here.
Sorry, just add E into that.
Okay.
Right. As an additional, a third exemption.
Um, right next to what is it? One. No, keep going. Oh, E, yeah, yeah. Yes, 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 sorry. Yeah, that language should be struck. We struck that.
Oh, no.
It was stricken because we were gonna, the council was gonna add it back into section J.
Right.
Correct, okay, so I'm copying it, so I have the language, and I'm moving it.
Well, you don't have to
You just
You have to put five, five, six, six, dash, eight.
Just have to make a reference.
Just going to reference five, sixty, six, E.
Shall not be subject, so you just have to reference it, you don't have to move it. But you do have to strike the the date out of the, out of the
That needs to be moved and seconded.
Oh. Yep.
I moved and it was seconded to add E as one of the, the third exception.
We made it. All right, so on this motion discussion. Uh-oh. What happened?
Fire? asleep?
So on this motion discussion.
No, for clarity.
Okay.
If I may. It was Counselor Grace who made this motion at committee. And I appreciated it because she was able to quantify what I think everybody has been hearing, and at least most of us have been wanting to do, is hold harmless the people who are already doing this business. And if it turns out you own two units or three units, we're still holding you harmless by adding in section E as an exemption, an exception, G and H. So this here, if you have a valid up-to-date license as of registration as of four one twenty twenty five, the effective date of this article, this does not limit you to the hundred and twenty days, and does not limit you to one unit if you're already registered. But it does very specifically say, if you are now buying a house, and it's your second or third unit, you will not have the you will be subject to the hundred and twenty day limit.
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure, I said that for clarification's sake.
Suzanne, have your hand up?
Yes, I suggest that, um, instead of using the terms existing owner occupied and non-owner occupied residential units, you use that same language as, um, non-primary residential unit or primary residential unit.
That is a friendly amendment?
Anybody have an objection to making that as a friendly amendment?
Frank, Frank has to accept it as a friendly amendment too, the second.
Frank, are you accepting it?
Yes, I am accepting it. Absolutely.
You like some sauce on that?
It's spicy. I mean, anything, hungry.
Want some Wheaties?
Primary residence.
Set mark, guys. Primary occupied. Change.
Non-primary
Primary
To non-primary
Residential unit.
Existing owner occupied, so existing primary residence.
It's a existing owner occupied should be stricken.
Yep, and that should be primary residence.
Existing states.
Existing states.
Primary residence.
And then, and golf or stain here?
Primary res.
And then non-primary residential unit.
So you, you'd want to use the same, where you said have primary residences, you actually want that to be a primary residential unit? Then you're using the same language.
In our definition, it just says primary residence. And then it says a residential unit. So in our definitions, it says primary residence.
True, okay.
So we should leave it at that, right?
Yes.
Primary residence. Residence, singular. Sorry.
Can't be more than one primary residence. It can be more than one non-primary resident. You can't be a primary resident in more than one location.
Primary red of the city.
That would be residence with a T. Existing primary residences.
Oh, yeah, it's residential, resident, um yeah.
It's the units, right, so existing primary resident unit.
Primary residence is what the, is what the definition is. And then it goes to a residential unit in which an operator. So that's where it is in the definitions, I mean. And then the other one is non-primary residential unit.
Close enough for government work officially.
Okay, so
You on the motion now?
We're on that motion to change that. We may want to change something else too. A pile of order.
All friendly. I want to, I, I, at some point, I want to speak on the overall motion change, so.
So on this, on this amendment, and we all understand what it is? All we do is change it.
Six, six, five, sixty six.
Right, and add five, sixty six E. Okay, so on that, all set? All those in favor? Okay, so, on that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, eyes have it, eight to one.
Eight in favor.
Eight in favor, and one absent, yes, sorry. Sorry about that.
Says being on the council's phone.
So I'm not sure if, and I'll ask Suzanne. The Department of Revenue, um, not sure if they issue the certificate, um, ah, forget it, we'll just leave it.
Yeah.
Could read public, public registry of lodging operators, but we'll just leave it. And nothing else, now on the main motion. Counselor Grow.
So, the, uh, my, my understanding of the intent behind the grandfathering, which isn't proper terminology anymore anyway, but, was to, you know, one of the things that people kept saying was that we need data, we need data, we need data, and we have very little ways of getting data. One of the ways of getting data is to enact an ordinance and complete with all the inspections and the registrations and all the things that we've added into this, and allow it to play out over a period of time. Three, normally, ordinances are, as opposed to zoning changes, are applicable to people equally, so that A citizen and B citizen are treated the same. We, we, we put the, uh, the legacy clause in here in order to respect the fact that people had existing businesses, had made decisions, and, um, we wanna hold them as harmless as possible, but at some point, the intention of putting this in was that we would eventually make the ordinance equal and fair under the law to everybody. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of reducing or eliminating the, um, legacy clause, knowing that we have three years in which to change our mind. We can, we can watch the development of data moving forward. People, people can continue to operate their businesses as they have been operating them for at least two years without concern about things changing. But that would give us the opportunity to determine whether or not this ordinance is effective. And if it is, uh, and, or if we decide that, that existing businesses as of April 1st should continue to carry on as, as they are, we can make that change. But I think that it would be harder to do if we didn't have this clause in place. I think in three years, there, there's, a lot can change, and I think we need the option of being able to, you know, unify the, the ordinance so that it's, it's held, uh, equally to everybody who it applies to, and that's my objection to taking it out.
Thank you. Counselor Benson.
Thank you, and, um, I can understand, and many, um, short-term rentals and folks that are here and the passion that many folks talked about, and protecting those, and having the clause in originally was to protect folks that had been doing this for many years, and were really, as they have said tonight, helping so many industries, and especially supporting our tourism industry, which is a vital and integral part of our overall economy, that and the fishing industry. With that being said, um, I can, I, I respect, I really understand where Counselor Grow is coming from. My, but I also understand where, um, Counsel Worthley is, what he's, what he's trying to do here, but my question in this is, shall not transfer with ownership except within a fam- within the family unit. So my question on that, if I may, to Counselor Worthley, is, what do you mean by within the fam- so, we're talking about grandfathering in, and, and I, and I do have a, um, question for Suz- for Solicitor Egan. Has there ever been, though, a case where we've had in ordinances where we grandfathered people in, if you may, um, answer that? But to Counsel Worthley first is, what do you, what do you, can you explain, you're saying, except within the family? So, so you're talking about grandfathering in, and when, say, Mary passes away, it's gonna be grandfathered in to their son? Is that what you mean here?
Happy to answer that question.
Because that's how I'm, that's how I'm reading it, so.
I didn't write that, that came out of the ONA committee, as far as the word family unit, that was not what I, I didn't, uh, have an intention on that, and that came out of the ONA committee, so I would defer to Counselor Grace.
Yes, so I, yeah, I apologize, Counsel Worthley, as we know where it's 10:16 at night, and there's been so many, um, changes, and this is where the sausage, um, is made, as the council president said, so to Counselor, if I may, to Counselor Grace, is what, is the, is that something that you're, you're thinking of grandfathering in for future generations?
I think what it, what the, the goal was, that if you were to sell your home and it was a short-term rental, it, anything, everything would be void at that point.
Yep.
But if it was something that were an inheritance, it would, you, you would have the, um, capacity to continue on with that short-term rental.
For, in perpetuity? So for, forever, okay, um, I understand that. Can I, so Solicitor, if I, if I may, Solicitor, so my first question about grandfathering, and then also, I'm just a little, I can understand, Counselor Grace's, but it, what is the legality of, like, grandfathering something in perpetuity? Like, it goes from, it's from, from mother to son to grandson to great-grandchild? If, if you get what I'm saying, like, I'm just, I'm a little confused by that, but, so the two, first question is, has there been, um, grandfathering in other ordinances? And then to that question of my, I'm just confused by this grandfathering in perpetuity, so, thank you.
Yes, so if you think about zoning ordinances, certain lots of, um, lots, pre-existing non-conforming lots are always protected from new, um, zoning ordinances. So that is something that is, uh, legally viable and is done in other statutory, um, you know, regulatory frameworks. There is a, is a, um, protection, great, it used to be called grandfathering, there's grandfathered lots, um, in zoning, and, and then in the instance as having that protection go through the family, um, we do that with our moorings, I believe. So you can transfer a mooring to family members. So those are the two instances that I can think of, sort of off the top of my head, but it is something that is, is, um, contemplated and done in other instances, yes.
What could be the legality of this, though, could that be?
Well, it can be challenged to, the, the only thing I could see with the transfer, um, within a family unit, that, that could lead to, um, disputes, what's a family unit, what's the, what does transfer mean? You know, I know that the only other instance I can think of is where we allow that in Gloucester in our ordinances, and I don't know if it's an ordinance or it's a waterways board, um, regulation, but it's pretty specific about where it gets transferred to within the family unit and how that passes, and, um, so this is a little bit, this is big, um, broad terms that we're using here that may subject to some dispute, but then it may not, you know, I mean, it's, it's not too broad so that we can understand father, daughter, you know, um, that may be very simple, but then you could also say, what's a, is it a primary family unit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That makes sense, because it seems to me, and maybe legally, it could get messy, is, am I, is, because that a possibility?
It, it could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could, could the solution be that there's a definition of a family unit in the definition section?
Yes, or you could just put within, um, except within the primary family unit, you could put that here.
Oh, what, what defines a primary family unit?
I've, it's my understanding a primary family unit, and I, I don't have that definition, but I'm pre- I'm pretty comfortable with saying that that's between, um, the immediate family. Not, you know, we're not talking about second, third cousins removed.
Is it husband, wife?
Emma, grandpa.
Mother, father, um, son, daughter, does it?
Right, siblings, parents, grandparents, I think that would be. Nieces, nephews, so you know.
I'm looking at a legal, a legal definition on here, and it's saying, like, the prime, it's immediate family, it's like the smallest unit, so it would be parents, spouses, and children.
Right, that's, that's what it is in, in the waterways.
But just, uh, for example.
It's not siblings.
But if family, so for example, if I own a rental unit, I don't have any children, but my nephew has been helping me since he was seven, and I couldn't with, I wouldn't be able to, he can't buy my house and then take over the family business?
Correct.
But with the way it's written, he could.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it all depends upon how we, I think we have to define family unit, it can't just be, you know, anybody's second cousin.
Well, this is the off chance to happen, generation, 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 you know.
I understand, but.
As written.
We ran into, you know, in, in the, uh.
Motion, can we get to that for a moment?
Yeah.
I guess I, I would challenge every, everything is challengeable, right? Anybody can make a lawsuit about anything, and the word "and" could be challenged in court, the word "or", the comma, everything is challengeable. I think we've been very clear on our intention, at least this language is very clear on the intention. I think the record will show very clearly what we intend. I think the minutes will show very clearly what we intend. And we have a lawyer who was saying, I think I heard Suzanne saying, this is not too broad. And we also don't know that this is gonna happen 400 times, this is gonna happen one time, where someone thinks they're selling it to a stepchild, and then the neighbor complains, I mean, it's gotta be a complaint. It'd be a very remote chance that someone is buying this, not knowing that they, they grandfathered in, or not grandfathered in. I think the question before us is simply, we know what we're talking about. If we have some experience that informs us even more to make this more specific, we can always come back and add specificity to this. I'd like to speak to Counselor Grow's comments about, he's not supporting it because he thinks that in three years, if we get the data we have, then we can make modifications if it's not working. That can work for us. The question is, does it work for the people who are using this ordinance? And if someone just, we've heard from, I think his name is Sergio, he lives downtown, his family, they bought a unit, they bought a house, it's a secondary property, it's not their primary residence, and they have a 20-year mortgage. Now they're looking at 20 years, but the reality is, they have no guarantee that in three years, if Counselor Grow will be here, or if he would be inclined to say, we've made some changes, we made, we made a mistake, we need, we need to adjust this, we're giving them no confidence on their business plan to operate the short-term rental as they already decided and purchased this before these rules came into place. So I think that I would welcome the opportunity if we grandfather people in, and in three years, Counselor Grow says, now that we have data, this has become a problem, let's regulate it, versus saying, you only have for three years, and depend on a future counsel to come in in three years and say, yeah, now we have data, we interpret it this way. It's a lot harder to undo something than it is to, it's harder to do something to un- than to undo it. So I would say we, we keep the grandfathering as written in here, and we then work with the data, and if in three years we wanna tighten this up more, we can do that.
Counselor Grow.
Yeah, a couple things, one, I think it'd be harder pressed to not give people a three-year lead-up to the potential of taking that grandfathering status away, than if we came in three years later and said, not, not working, we're gonna change everything right now. So I think in, in a lot way, this is a much more humane way of looking at it. But I think that one of the things that, and one of the reasons why we looked at, in my thinking, that we looked at this, is that while I appreciate that there are individuals in here who are representing their business interests and their interests, and their, their investment interests, this is an industry that we are regulating. This is, this is no different in a lot of ways than the hotel industry, or any other industry that we, that we, we have regulations for. We wouldn't have, um, grandfathered liquor license regulations that allowed, you know, service until 2:00 in the morning and, and happy hour, or we wouldn't allow a hotel to, to have, you know, violate sort of what is considered standard hotel regulations because they'd been around for a while. I think that we have to look at this in the long term as an industry, and yes, it has positive impacts in the community, and I'm totally grateful for that. It has negative impacts too. One of the, one of the people who spoke tonight talked about buying a house, and I know for a fact that they have a, a unit in their house that they live in, they took a two-unit building out of a residential neighborhood, completely off the market, for potential year-round rentals. To me.
You shouldn't say that.
I know this, I know the history of it, I'm sorry, you're interrupting me, there's no need to interrupt me.
Not, not. Counselor Worthley.
I'm explaining what I know to be the fact, we, we got a letter, we got a letter explaining the situation, it's in the packet. If you just mind, you know, certain amount of decorum and not interrupt people all the time. My point is, is that is a harm, in my view, to the community. We've lost two-year out, year rentals in a neighborhood that could otherwise go to families. And we are risking, and especially with the next, uh, no limit on the number of units, expanding that potential harm, and the reason we put regulations in place was to mitigate harm before it became irreparable. And I think three years is a good viewpoint from which to gather data and to decide whether or not, um, this, these regulations are effective, whether they need to be modified, whether we need to allow the, the grandfathered clause to, to continue. I would be open to that, if at that point, that made sense. I think for now, we establish it, we warn people, we got three years to, to figure this out, see what the data says, and then we can move on.
Counselor Worthley, um, Counselor Grow is not saying that you said that.
It was said tonight.
It was said tonight.
And they did not say we would otherwise rent that out as a long-term unit.
No, they did not. Neither did Jason, did Counselor Grow, he said it could be.
They also sent a letter to the council, so we have that letter in our record, all right? I know the circumstances, you wanna make an argument, I don't know why.
All right, let's move on from that, please. Uh, Counselor Grace.
Um, you know, I mean, the whole goal was to, these people, people that have been doing this, and they've been doing it the right way all along, I don't think that we have a right to hold their futures in limbo, and by putting the three-year clause on it, that's exactly what we're doing.
Counselor Worthley.
I appreciate that the council.
New, new information.
Well, relative to what was just raised. Appreciate the comment that, um, it's, he, he said that it was, it's not easy to initiate a, a three-year, and it wouldn't be fair to them to initiate a three-year thing in the future. Yet, at 11:30 at night, at the senior center, and we had our hearing in August, out of nowhere came a three-year grandfather. So the idea that you don't, you wanna give a lead-up time, it could have been, it could be done because it was done, and it was done with no notification. In fact, the newspaper article two weeks before said, everybody who's currently operating in this industry is grandfathered. So they didn't come to the meeting, and then in the dark of the night, or 11th hour.
It was a little bit earlier than that, so.
It was 11 o'clock, it was 11 o'clock, and I, and we want decorum, we're not interrupting, but it just happened, by the way.
Counselor, I need, I need to ask for procedural vote right now.
Yeah, we need to extend, we need to extend our, our meeting.
I move to, um, to extend the meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Majota.
Send it until.
It's 11 o'clock. Now we have to vote again, and it has to be unanimous.
Right now, it's 10:30.
Right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Eyes have it, seven to zero, two absent. Okay, can we stick to this motion?
Take with the motion that was made in ONA, like Counselor Grace said, we can still collect the data, and whether it's three years or five years, whether we're on the council or not, we all have more data, and then we can make changes. That's why I'm in favor of the changes that we made in ONA.
I love that you said that.
Counselor Benson.
On the motion, um, I'm generally, I generally, I respect what Counselor Grace has just mentioned about people that have been doing this for a very long time, following the rules. At the same time, I also think that the three years. At the same time, I also think that the three years could be, is, is a reasonable ask. And when we're talking, at that point, we can see where the data is and if we want to extend it beyond. With that being said, I think that there are, what I heard tonight, I'm generally supportive of this change. However, I am not in favor of the, of the exception, of the, this exception, this grandfathering, rather, going beyond the person that currently owns it. If we're trying to help those that are doing it now, sure, but if it's going to go to inheriting, creating frankly, generation, so with that being said. So yeah, I would be supportive of this, but I would, if I may, Council President.
So this motion is just to add E.
Yeah, just add, so, so with that being said, we're just looking at, are we looking at E or we're looking at?
We're looking at just adding.
We voted that.
We voted on that?
Yeah, we voted. This is on the whole motion. But with that, could I make an amendment? Could I, is that possible right now or? Okay. To delete, this exemption shall not transfer with ownership except with the family unit as defined in section five dash 66J.
There is no, there is no, I don't know why that, there is no, nothing's defined, there is no family unit defined in this section.
Saying this.
You want to take that out?
Oh, that's what I'm asking, I'm asking, and I, I thought that you said that was, it's late at night and I apologize and I'm, I'm not as, I'm not green anymore, so.
So what would you like to strike?
I would like to strike out the last sentence.
This exception?
Yes, this exception shall not transfer with ownership except with the family unit as defined in section five sat dash 66J.
Anyway, on the second.
I, I got a question about the motion. Not, not a substantive question, yes or no, but don't you want to keep the ownership? You want to, shall not transfer with ownership, period?
Yes, thank, thank, thank you, what I, we thank you. I appreciate it. So what I'm, we got looking, this exception shall not transfer with ownership, period.
All right, a second.
I thank you for the friendly amendment.
Yeah, that's it. Is there a second? Motion fails, no second.
I was trying to read. I will second that. I will second it for discussion purposes. I'm sorry.
It's late, come on.
Sorry. He's actually working.
Come on, so it's been moved and seconded, discussion.
What I, again, I, I, I think, I have, I have a real difficulty, I can get behind allowing grandfathering in for those that currently own them, but when that person passes away or sells the property, but we're just looking, I'm just thinking in the context of someone is going to be inheriting the property, it starts fresh. It should be fresh. It should be, they now have to register that property. That's, that's really where, it's, it's as simple as that. I, I'm, I just can't, I'm not going to get behind the idea that someone is going to have this in perpetuity for generations upon generations.
I would like to just point out. Fifty-six J should have been changed to fifty-six K, which is the non-transferability portion of this, and we're not talking about eliminating that, which says, non-transferability, short-term rental registration shall be granted solely to an owner and shall not be transferred or assigned to any other person's legal entity or address. The registration does not run with the property, it shall be terminated upon sale or transfer of property for which the registration has been issued. And that has not been brought up for any amendment, that still stands.
Okay.
Counselor, Counselor Majota.
Not support that amendment. I think it's important that, you know, if a family has a business and they want to pass it down to their, you know, next generation, I think it's important that they're able to do that.
Sorry, but this does, has no place in this amendment because, in, in this because it's superseded by section K, which is what I just read, the non-transferability. Counselor Gilman.
Is the motion valid?
I, I hate to do this, but right now, we just lost Scott and now we don't have Sean. And even though we voted to.
We have a quorum.
I understand that.
We have a quorum.
I understand that.
Let's not, we have a quorum, let's continue on.
I know, but, but we're, we're dealing with an important.
We're at the end of it, this is it, this is the end. There's one more thing that's for profit, this is the end.
Is the motion in order, given that?
It's not, that, that section is not, is. Suzanne, are you still here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so do you agree that section K supersedes this?
So. That I, what, what I would say is that what is before you, that's, that accept clause, a motion can be made to delete that accept clause. Whether or not that accept clause has any effect with regard to subsection K is, if it doesn't, it should definitely be deleted, and if it does, the intent of the motion is to make sure it doesn't have any effect. So that motion should be considered.
Yeah, absolutely, it's, it's in total contradiction to, to section K. Which was not in the original amendment.
Right, and that would be the reason to.
Or brought up.
And that would be the reason to consider this motion to delete that language.
As I understand, are you saying that the entire sentence, this exception shall not transfer with ownership and the except without family unit shouldn't be here because it exists in K?
Because it exists in K, it is in total conflict with K.
K says it cannot be transferred.
Correct.
At all.
And that was in, that, that's, that language has been here.
And I didn't, I didn't propose changing that and it didn't get changed.
From original, so I propose, would you like to amend, take a friendly amendment to eliminate the whole thing?
Yes, but, so just so, can I just, can I ask you a question? Is that okay? So K, so we're looking at K is under prohibitions, is that?
Okay, it's right under J, but it's not in our template because it was not part of anything that was put forward.
No, I understand.
Was not part of the original.
I accept that amendment, absolutely.
Second.
Yeah, any more discussion on this amendment? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, seven to zero, two absent. Back to the main motion. Any more discussion on the main motion?
Just a comment, if I may.
Don't repeat anything that's been said before, please.
Try to remember, but I have no problem if in a year or two or three, we gather the data that tells us we are going in the wrong direction or the right direction and want to introduce a change. And if we do, it'll follow the process with a public hearing, public notification, surely be covered in the newspaper. But to say that we should keep it with a three-year limit now means that the people who are doing this have to make a change soon.
You made this point already. Thank you.
Can this be done by roll call?
So.
This particular vote?
Sure, we can have this by roll call.
So a yes vote means that we, we keep the amendment?
Keep the amendment, striking the last sentence. And adding section E.
So a no vote leaves the existing unit language as it is.
Correct. No.
A yes vote would.
No, sorry. Yeah, a yes vote is for the change, correct?
A yes is for grandfathering, no is three years.
That's correct.
Okay.
Counselor Gross.
Yes.
Counselor Gro.
Yes. Oh, sorry, I thought I was next. I'm sorry, Jason.
No.
Counselor Majota.
Yes, sorry.
Counselor, oh, Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
No.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
The vote is four in favor. Sorry, I'm sorry. Counselor Grace?
Yes.
All right, sorry. The vote is five in favor, two opposed, two absent, the motion passes.
Thank you. And then we have just one more short thing to take up. Delete T, the number of non-primary residential short-term rental units that may be.
Oh, wait, wait.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay.
He pulled a me.
All right, yeah.
I'll start from, I'll start all over again. Delete T, the number of non-primary residential short-term rental units that may be permitted shall be capped at 500. And I shall second.
Emotions were moved and seconded. We understand that this is for non-primary residential units. As of a couple of days ago, there was 524, 514 units registered with the state. And so it's far below the 500 threshold that we're at now.
Five fourteen is below 500?
No, that's total, that includes all three types. This is just for non-primary residences.
That number is at this?
No, we do not because we do not have.
So that includes, just so you, just again, it includes.
Shared rentals.
Shared rentals.
And.
Primary.
Primary rentals. And.
And, okay, I think it's, it's good to, to say it a couple.
On the motion. Thank you. So.
Oops, seconded.
I did. I think we heard tonight that the building inspector's office and IT department has done a fantastic job making it very easy for people to register. And now with that registration, I think as Mr. O'Brien said, that there's also owner information that is going to be very valuable to the council, this council, future councils in really understanding what is happening in this industry. And I appreciate that there's a total of five fourteen, some are within their present primary residence, some that aren't, but there's data we don't have. And without that, we pick a number, which might be the right number, by the way, in the long run. But there's no reason why we can't say, and we can even put it in the minutes to say, we're going to bring this up again in September, once we have a season worth of data, to say, okay, is 500 the right number or the wrong number? Maybe it's 625, I don't know, and none of us actually know. We think we have an idea of what the information might be. There's no reason, we can't use the data when we get it to inform that decision. So I, I have no problem with a number at some point. My problem with this is a number before we have the information. And that's why I think we reduce the cap and just put a little tickler file that says, okay, October 1st, let's look at the data. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, I would just, I'm going to make a comment. You made a comment earlier how it is easier to put limitations on later and that is just, you know, that, that just doesn't stand up.
It's not impossible.
But you said it was easier than us adopting it now.
I said because.
And here again, I think this is easier to adopt now, gather the data, we're safely below the cap, we know this.
We don't know this.
Can you just say we were at five fourteen?
Point of order, if someone's speaking, can they be allowed to finish their statement? I, the constant interruptions is, is really, really frustrating.
Okay, enough, enough, please. Everyone, don't, I'm talking now, please. So we do know because there isn't, out of the 514 or whatever, 524, there is not, but 500 of those are not second homes.
Those are the ones, if I may ask, those are the ones that are registered with the state?
Correct.
And they're not yet registered with the city?
Correct, we don't care about what, they're not, they have six months to register with the city.
Is it possible that there are people who are doing this that aren't registered with the state that register the city in the next six months?
You think that there's going to be like 200?
I didn't say I think, I think we all don't know.
I think we need to have the data before we erase this. Because that's what everyone's been asking.
I think we need the data and before we decide.
I'm talking, Jeff, please.
We went back and forth.
No, no back and forth. You, this is not a debate.
Most of God.
I, I am saying what I feel and what I believe, and that is, is that you collect the data and if the limit needs to be risen, driven up, then yes, but we were in no danger of reaching that cap today. Counselor Gro.
Yeah, same, same here. If we, if we don't put a cap on it, just as theoretically that nobody adds it, we could have 300, 400, 500 new units taken off the market, rental units turned into short-term rentals. And then, of course, you, what are you going to do about it at that point? You're going to come back a year from now and say, oh, we're, we're going to put a 500 cap on it now and so you 300 people that are above the cap, tough luck. Well, all night long, we've been hearing about how we can't jeopardize someone's business model with, with regulations. I think if we have a cap at 500 of non-residential units, that's, that's 500 potential non-residential units that are off the market for year-round rentals at a time when we are desperately trying to develop new homes for people to, to live in. I don't think 500, I think 500 is too high, frankly, but we don't have the number, so let's work on that and figure out what the number is. But to not have a number, I think is irresponsible.
Anybody else? Counselor Grace?
Yeah, the original 500 number came from, because when we originally debated all of this back in September, we knew of 464 units within the city. So we picked a number that allowed for modest growth. But we, you know, but even at that point, we did not know what the, the breakup of those number was, how many of them were primary. But I think it's important to have a cap on it. And then if we need to tweak it later, we tweak it.
Okay, let's keep this, this is a real short thing, let's keep this.
No, I, I, I agree that we must keep the cap and, and I actually agree with Counselor Gro that it actually is probably too high. Again, we're speaking about 500 units now not being available for long-term housing. We see this hindering homeownership, all these things that are happening, not just in Gloucester, but it's happening all over the country. So I agree that five, we need to keep this in, 500 though is too high.
Okay, any more discussion on this? Counselor Gilman?
I'm inclined to support the 500 and staying where that is right now. We've just done a grandfather clause for the people that are already committed, and I think that that was a huge change in the spirit of where we just came from. And the other thing that always is fearful to me is that there's always a fear that we don't want people to be always hoarding possible housing units for short-term rentals because we really would like our kids and our, and our parents to be able to age in place. And right now, there's no place for them. So I think that this is a good compromise and I will be supporting this.
Okay, can I call a question? All those in favor?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, to delete.
Say yes.
Oh, right, correct. All those in favor?
No.
Oh. All those opposed? No.
Can we do a roll call vote?
Can you just remind us what we're doing again, retired?
We're voting to not have this line through, to reinstate the 500 number, to keep, to keep it, to not accept this amendment.
If we, if we want the 500.
Yes.
We vote?
No.
No, thank you. Counselor Gross.
No.
Counselor Gro.
No.
Counselor Majota.
Yes.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
No.
Counselor Gilman. Counselor Gilman. I'm confused, I, I'm not ready to vote. I, I want to keep, I'm not looking at it right now, so I'm, you know, let me turn my back and. I, I want to keep, I'm not looking at it right now, so I'm, here, let me turn my back and.
Have it in your packet, here.
I know, I know.
On the template.
A yes vote eliminates the cap.
I want, I want the cap.
Then, then vote no.
No, thank you. Counselor Grace.
No.
The vote is two in favor, five opposed, two absent, the motion fails.
Add five.
Sorry. Add five through sixty-six, subsection T reserved. Section five through sixty-nine prohibition, oh, sorry.
Excuse me. This is, this is like not applicable anymore because you voted to put this back in.
Delete and renumber. Section five, that's what I was reading.
Okay.
Delete.
Five sixty.
Yeah, but that's what I was just reading.
Okay.
Oh, I did, sorry, I read add, you're right, okay. Delete and renumber subsequent bullets, one limitation on number of short-term rentals. Any owner may register to operate only one dwelling unit as short-term rentals. If a person owns or is listed as a manager and or is an agent for two or more dwelling units, this person must choose only one unit to be registered. As a short-term rental, no person shall have more than one legal title or beneficial interest in dwelling units. Used for short-term rentals except for, except as provided for above. An owner may hire a property management company to list and manage short-term rentals, but the registration must be in the owner's name, and I shall move.
Second. Okay. This we've discussed at length earlier during the grandfathering phase. So this, um, motion and amendment made by Counselor Mejota, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Is to eliminate, um, the single. Ownership, but we grandfathered that in already by a previous vote. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that that's been grandfathered in, and if this, this would be for future activities.
Yes means we just deleting it, no means we want it back.
Correct, just like the one before. Discussion?
I'm, I just want to make clarification too, a no vote leaves it as is, leaves the, leaves the number of short-term rentals a person can own as to one.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And we grandfathered it in, in the previous.
Just want to be sure that we know what we're voting on, because it's not clear to me, and. We're deleting the option for people to own more than one.
Yes, that's your, that is your amendment.
Because it's already in the other section.
It's in the existing ordinance, this is your amendment to remove it from the ordinance.
I understand, so.
We're voting on whether or not to accept your amendment.
Yes, delete it.
So the motion from O N A was to support, three, nothing vote was to support deleting the section.
Yes, because they took it all up at one, in one big vote.
Right.
So it didn't necessarily reflect how they were feeling on each individual item.
Well, I like to think if they took a vote, they took a vote.
I, I understand, so, yeah, but, you know, that was at O N A, which doesn't. Which can be changed, you know, which.
They made the recommendation after their studious review, is that what you're saying?
No, I didn't.
Can I just read this again to myself, make sure I'm, I'm clear again?
It's your motion.
Yeah, but there's been a lot of material and changes tonight.
President, can you make a motion to extend?
Oh, we got five minutes.
I don't know, we're not going to be done.
Yes, eliminates this paragraph. Okay, started.
Hey, on the motion?
Up. Okay, so the reason why we put this, the reason why I put this in, and what was discussed very briefly at O N A and voted on positively. Was that if you currently own more than one short-term rental unit. The restrictions that we passed in August would mean you could only own one that was non-primary. What I put in here says if you currently own more than one, you can still own more than one.
What you did was you eliminated it, you didn't put anything in, you did not add, you just deleted.
Well, I deleted the restriction.
Correct, and you didn't add anything in.
Well, it didn't need to be added, right, there's no restriction.
But you just said you, what I put in.
Okay, I'm sorry. What we put in, in general, does not limit if you know own more than one. If you own more than one currently, you can still own more than one.
Only if this amendment that you have put forward is accepted.
A yes vote says if you own more than one, nothing changes for you.
If you own more than one, then this is eliminated from the ordinance.
The restriction is eliminated.
Correct, it is no longer a prohibition.
Okay. Now, I do want to ask the question that Counselor Gilman sort of raised, where we have two counselors, one of who chaired the committee and voted in favor.
We have a quorum, sorry.
Can we continue?
We have a quorum, let's continue now.
Can we make a motion to continue? We can make a motion to continue if we feel like.
Well, now, now you're, now it's, I'm going to call the question, because it's getting too close to eleven o'clock.
Well, I'm going to make a motion, we continue then.
Fine. Is there a second?
Because it will fail otherwise.
Is there a second? No second.
So nobody wants a second?
Move the question.
Wow.
Yep. So, the motion on the table is to eliminate this section. Roll call vote. A no vote keeps this section in play, we grandfathered it in.
We don't need. Excuse me, if we've grandfathered it in, we don't need to say this anymore.
We don't, yes, because it's for future.
Okay, so if we grandfathered it in.
Doesn't affect the people who have made investments today.
We're fine eliminating this.
No, I'm not, but.
So. This is what happens when it's eleven o'clock at night, I'm sorry.
I just.
And I've been really paying attention the whole night, so this isn't about me, this is about fatigue. No, it might be simple for you, but right now, I want to make sure we're clear, this is a big, important vote, and I'm not clear right now.
Okay, then.
Okay.
I made a motion to continue, nobody seconded it, so.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure if we need to do that, but, but just.
I'm trying to explain it.
Okay.
So, this limits the number of short-term rentals that any single person can own. For, we already grandfathered in the people who already own them. This would be for the future, to eliminate people buying multiple properties to turn them into short-term rentals, which is not corporations. We have individual people who are buying, buying these homes to turn directly into short-term rentals, because it's a, it's a very good return on investment. And, um, you know, what formerly, in my, you know, back in the day. Investment properties were long-term rentals, now it's short-term rentals. So what this does is this, this limits to one, one person, one unit. For the future.
Unless you grandfathered.
Right, if you grandfathered, we already voted that, that this would not be affecting.
Okay, so, so if that's what I want to, to vote, when am I voting, Tony? Tell, tell me when I'm voting.
Tell you what you're voting.
No, is it?
A no vote keeps our current language with the limitation in place. A yes vote.
You asked, could you just answer my first question?
Didn't, didn't I?
Not really.
You asked me what we're voting.
I'd like to make a motion to extend.
Yeah, we're. It only takes one person to say no, so.
Second.
Second. All right, we have a motion to extend, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
If we don't continue the meeting, what happens? Does the motion get continued to the next meeting?
Everything gets continued to the next meeting if we don't continue.
So can, can, can you, can I just ask again?
I want to vote no.
It has to be unanimous, so we just.
Oh, you mean, oh, and staying on?
Well, he says he's going to vote no.
I want to vote yes, let's, I mean.
I don't think we're getting better as we get later in the night.
We have to vote on that, and, oh, yes. I've seen it vote yet, so if he's saying if he votes no, the meeting over. Or.
Yes.
The meeting's up, so Counselor Worthley, you're.
So I can understand this, the rest of the agenda, there's not much left, stops.
Correct.
And we pick it up in two weeks.
Right.
Then I vote no to get.
We're going to have to cancel any presentations.
I mean, we are where we are, right?
Yes, we have the CPC next time too.
Are we, are we done?
Counselor Worthley voting no.
I'm voting no on continuing.
A motion to adjourn. We'll move.
Second.
Thank you, everybody who hung in there with us, appreciate it.